Get started, welcome everyone to the Union Township Board of Trustees meeting. It's a little after six o'clock, we'll get started. Will you please rise and then join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
All right, welcome everyone. And then, before we get started, if anyone has any comments they'd like to make, there's comment cards in the back, feel free to fill those out. And you've got a couple moments before we collect those, so you can take your time, and then, once we get started with public comments, we'll collect those. And we'll go ahead and get started. And Mr. Campbell, would you please let the record reflect that all three trustees are present? And then, by the way, Mr. Vice Chair, thank you for filling in for me last month. Being I was gone for a few weeks at the Air Force, so appreciate you covering me, appreciate you.
Thank you for coming back to restore order.
You got it. The gentlemen, I'll entertain a motion for the approval of minutes for the May ninth business meeting minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Luke?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Mr. Campbell, is there any correspondence for tonight?
Yes, sir, I have two, they're both liquor permits. First one is actually a change in ownership, and it's Eastgate Pizzeria Partners LLC doing business as La Rosa's Eastgate, forty-four fifty Eastgate Boulevard, space two-ten, Union Township Cincinnati, Ohio four-five-two-four-five. Police Department has no objections, and Mr. Floudy has sent me the information on the appropriate zoning. Second one is also a liquor permit. This is a change of use, change of ownership, I'm sorry. We're going from Shree, S-H-R-I Food Market Incorporated, doing business as Woodlandsville Food Mart, nine-seven-seven Ohio Pike, Union Township Cincinnati, Ohio four-five-two-four-five, and that is transferring to Vinayak, V-I-N-A-Y-A-K Gas Incorporated, nine-seven-seven Ohio Pike, Union Township Cincinnati, Ohio four-five-two-four-five. Again, the police department has no objections, and Mr. Floudy has assured me that they are in the zoning compliance. That concludes the correspondence.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Campbell.
Thank you.
No proclamations or special presentations, so now we will move on to public comments, but before we begin that, I want to say, I think ninety percent of you are here for a zoning case here tonight, so I would ask that you hold all your comments, if you're just talking about the zoning case, until we get to that zoning case, because I'd hate for you to have to repeat yourself, if that makes sense. So with that, if there's anyone that has any public comments, I'll ask you to come forward and also bring your card, so we have that for the record. And then, again, just hold your thoughts on the zoning case until we get to that part of the agenda.
I think you do have some cards available, sir.
I just got, hold on, let me confirm, hold on. Okay. Orchard Encroach, man, okay, that would be case. Give me one moment, look through. Business, I only see zoning, zoning apartments, apartments, and properties apartments. All I have is, I have one public comment. Is there anyone else that would like to speak for public comments? Okay, I got one, Mr. Chris Hicks, why don't you come on up, sir? Good evening, sir, how are you?
I'm good, good, how you doing?
Good, good, good to see you. Please state your name, and you know the address for the record?
I'm Chris Hicks, four-four-four Woodward Court, Cincinnati, Ohio. Thank you for the time to talk for a few minutes tonight, I just wanted to tell you, I looked at the new website, and Joe, you criticized me that I'm not complimentary on stuff?
Yeah.
And the new website, I think, is actually pretty well laid out, logical and organized. It's missing some information that's not up to date, like the current addendums, up-to-date addendums. But what I'm here to talk about tonight, real quick, is about the, what I describe as the political payoff to Cincinnati Nature Center, that shows to me as a payoff because it's been concealed consistently by this board from public view, by structuring it in a manner that causes it not to be discussed in meetings. So last year, you guys paid nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and sixty cents to keep just under the threshold, to have it be presented to the public, to the Cincinnati Nature Center for a wellness benefit, for the staff of the township to be able to use the Cincinnati Nature Center. Never mind that the Cincinnati Nature Center was a very active political benefactor to you gentlemen up here, when it came to the Miller Place project. This year, I guess I could say, I'll give you a compliment on this, is that this year you only paid nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fifty-five cents. So I don't know how we got a five cent savings, but again, you're clearly structuring the amount to not talk about it in public. And there's some debate, I had a little email discussion with Mr. Campbell. In the May ninth meeting, Mr. Becker said that items, that the discussion of purchase orders was specifically for items that were ten thousand dollars or less, okay? Ten thousand dollars or more, ten thousand dollars or more were purchase orders that were going to be discussed, and we've had some discussion whether it's ten thousand or not, but it actually doesn't matter, because you structured the payment to be nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and sixty cents. I'd be very interested to know what that number that divides by to come up with an even cost per membership. I just think that first, we shouldn't be using taxpayers' money to reward people who supported you guys in your political campaigns, and help you to gin up support in your political campaigns. We also absolutely should not be doing it in a way that is not disclosed to the public and is buried, by structuring the payments to be nine thousand nine hundred and ninety-nine dollars and fifty-five cents. But on one hand, I do have to compliment you, as I said, that it's five cents less than the payment that you structured to hide it from the public last year, for the same purpose, to let the Cincinnati Nature Center, say, have a thank you from our township taxpayers for the work they did to gin up support for you gentlemen in your political campaigns. Thank you for the time to talk.
Thank you, Mr. Hicks. And I don't have any more cards, but is there anyone else that would like to speak on public comments tonight? Okay, seeing none, I'll close public comments. And personal actions, Mr. Patrick Eubright, come on up for it, how you doing, sir?
Good, good, good.
All right, gentlemen, tonight, we are here to confirm, I'll entertain a motion to confirm promotion appointment for Mr. Patrick Eubright to the position of Assistant Director of the Union Township Service Department, effective June fourteenth, at hourly rate of forty-six point nine-four an hour.
So moved. Second.
And Mr. Campbell? Oh, I'm sorry, any discussion?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Taylor might want to introduce Mr. Eubright to the community.
Yes, please, I'm sorry, Ms. Taylor, please, yeah, sorry, go ahead.
No big deal.
I missed a meeting, I'm sorry.
I'm out of practice. Tonight, I would like to present to the Board of Trustees, Pat Eubright, for consideration of a promotion for the position of the Assistant Service Director. Mr. Eubright has been a service department employee since two thousand and five. During his tenure, Mr. Eubright has worked in the cemetery, parks and the roads. During his eighteen years at the township, he started out as a maintenance worker one, then being promoted to sexton for the last fourteen years. He has assisted me with many projects within the organization, which has made him, which has made him a leader within the service department. Mr. Eubright has earned a bachelor's degree from Wilmington College and a Bachelor of Arts. Mr. Eubright is a past president of the Ohio Cemetery Association. He has successfully completed all facets of the promotional process. I respectfully ask the board to promote Pat Eubright to the position of Assistant Service Director within the service department at a rate of pay of forty-six ninety-four an hour. His promotion would be effective June fourteenth, twenty-twenty-three, at seven a.m. Thank you.
Mr. Taylor, thank you very much, appreciate that. Mr. Eubright, how are you?
Fine, sir.
It's a great night for you, isn't it?
It is.
Good, good, good. You got your family here? Yeah, please introduce them, yeah.
This is my wife, Rachel, my youngest daughter Savannah, my youngest daughter Shelby.
Good, 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 love that, yeah. Okay, so, almost twenty years, right?
Getting there, yeah, two thousand and five.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Time flies.
Incredible, thank you for your service dedication to our township.
Thank you.
And Ms. Taylor speaks very highly of you, and whenever we have hires or promotions, I always call our department heads, and I talked to Ms. Taylor today, and he had nothing but positive things to say about you, and I just appreciate your dedication to Union Township, very much.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Becker?
Yeah, so you're a cemetery sexton?
Yes.
The public might be interested in knowing, what is a sexton? What do you do?
So sexton is the term for caretaker of the grounds, I believe it's an old English term. I'm in charge, was in charge of the grounds for record retention, mowing, maintenance, selling of cemetery lots, geological research, just quite all. Pretty much the main man to go to, any positive things or any complaints. So dealt with the public many years, helping them through death.
Now it's time for a stupid joke. As you know, people are dying to get into our cemetery. It's good to see you're getting out of this.
Mr. Luke?
I just, I echo the comments of both trustee Dills and trustee Becker, and just a thanks to you, happy to continue to have your service here with the township, and exciting to see where things continue to go for you. Thank you for all your dedication to the community.
Thank you, sir.
And the family, thank you.
Great. And Mr. Campbell, roll call, please.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Luke?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations, Mr. Eubright.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Hey, Mr. Eubright, what we'll do is, we've got two more to get through, and then we'll call you up and get a picture with you, that's all right, yeah, you got it. All right, next item is, I'm going to throw this over to our fire chief, Mr. Stan Diamond. Sir?
Thank you, Mr. Dills. This evening, I would like to introduce and recommend Mr. Josh Galvin for consideration for the position of full-time firefighter/paramedic. He has more than eighteen years of experience in the fire and EMS field, he currently holds certifications as a firefighter-two, fire safety inspector, fire instructor, as well as a paramedic. He has earned his associate's degree in technical studies and emergency medical services through the University of Cincinnati. He has successfully completed all aspects of our hiring process, and I would recommend a conditional offer of employment to Mr. Galvin as a full-time firefighter/paramedic at a rate of pay consistent with step three of the collective bargaining agreement, effective June twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-three, pending successful completion of his physical examination.
Thank you, chief. Gentlemen, I'll entertain a motion to confirm the appointment of Mr. Josh Galvin to the position of firefighter/paramedic, effective June twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-three, at a rate consistent with step three of the current collective bargaining agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Galvin, congratulations, sir, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Good, 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 what part of town are you from?
I live in Owensville.
Oh, yeah, not too far, not too far, great. Hey, what's your height, ballpark?
Five-eight.
Five-eight?
Yeah.
I thought we, I thought we, can you play basketball?
No.
Okay, okay, all right, all right, let's confirm.
He's a guard.
Are you familiar with the history there, the basketball, police, fire?
I've, yes.
Say no.
Yes.
I love it, I love, is your family here?
They are, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, point them out to me, would you?
I got my wife Catherine, my mom Gina, and my father Bob, and then in the back is my father, and my, and my, I got my youngest son Benjamin over there.
I love it, I love it, they gotta be proud. Yeah, that's great, that's great. I appreciate you coming on board with us, and we're excited to have you.
Thank you.
Yeah, very much. Mr. Becker?
Yeah, I just want to say, welcome to the best fire department in the state of Ohio.
Thank you.
Yeah, we're excited to have you and your family here, just look forward to the culture building that you'll be a part of, as we continue to just excel and do great things here in the township. Now, the blond-haired boy back there, that's your son?
Yes.
Man, he's a cute kid, like, I don't know why everyone's up here looking, up here, they should be looking back at that kid. Awesome, welcome very much.
Thank you.
Great, great. Mr. Campbell, roll call, please.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Luke?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations, sir. Congratulations, Josh. Congratulations.
Congratulations, welcome.
Josh, hang tight, we'll get through one more, and we'll get a picture with you, all right? And then, chief, Diamond, I'll throw it over to you again, sir.
Thanks. Secondly, this evening, I'd like to introduce and recommend Mr. John Binghamman for consideration, again, for a full-time position as a firefighter/paramedic. He has, he has more than five years' experience in the fire EMS field, he currently holds certification in the state of Ohio as a firefighter-two, and a paramedic. He's currently serving as a full-time firefighter with the city of Maysville, and a volunteer with the village of Ripley in Brown County, and if I'm not mistaken, isn't that Union Township in Brown County?
It is, yes, sir.
Coming to the, the real Union Township.
The real Union Township.
He too has successfully completed all aspects of the hiring process, and I would recommend a conditional offer of employment as a full-time firefighter/paramedic, a rate of pay consistent with step two of the collective bargaining agreement, effective June twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three, pending successful completion of his physical examination.
Thank you, chief. Gentlemen, I'll entertain a motion to confirm the appointment of John Binghamman to the position of full-time firefighter/paramedic, effective June twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three, at a rate consistent with step two of the current collective bargaining agreement.
So moved.
Second.
And, well, Mr. Binghamman, how are you?
I'm good, sir, how are you?
Good, good, good. And if I'm not mistaken, your mother is the mayor of Ripley, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, where's she at?
She's in the back.
The, do you ever suffer from PTSD going through elections and such at all, or no? The, well, it's good to have you here, appreciate it very much, and so, yeah, but you pointed out your family to us, could you?
Well, that's my mother, and my sister Bailey, and my girlfriend Sarah.
Excellent, excellent, I'd be very proud of you, sir. So, but a lot of experience you bring here, and which, do you live in Brown County now?
Yes, sir, I live in Ripley.
Okay, okay, well, maybe we'll get you to come closer then, sometime, but hey, appreciate you coming on board with us, and very much. Mr. Becker?
Plan to commute or move?
Uh, commute for now, I just bought a house recently, so I'm not planning on moving just yet.
How long a drive is it?
About forty, forty-five minutes.
Oh, okay, I thought it was longer.
It's not terrible.
Okay, it's not terrible.
Depends on traffic in Eastgate.
I received the, I received the Brown County Visors Guide just recently, and been going through that, my wife and I and the kids have been planning to get out to visit Ripley, so we'll be out to visit you soon. So there's a winery and a distillery in that area, yep, mother's shaking her head, yes, so, yep.
Mom is back there shaking her head, he's not moving, though, so I think mom just vetoed that move.
I love it, I love it. I assume, can you play ball?
Uh, not very well.
Hey.
Chief Diamond?
Chief, we need to start making this a question on the questionnaire, you know, from the application, you know? Good, 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 glad to have you on board, sir. And, sir, we will go ahead and take a roll call, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Luke?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Congratulations, John.
Right, everybody.
Welcome. Go ahead.
Welcome. Congratulations, welcome. Excited to have you.
Great, great, and then we'll go and take a picture of you guys real quick, and then we'll send you on.
[inaudible]
Great, great, and then we'll go and take a picture of you guys real quick, and then we'll send you on.
[inaudible]
Great, great, and then we'll go and take a picture of you guys real quick, and then Okay, we'll move along on our agenda for our department reports, and we'll start with our fire and EMS service with chief Stan Diamond, sir.
Thank you again, Mr. Dills, I think those are two good additions to the fire department, and we've had years of good quality service to the township. For the month of May, we made two-hundred-and-eleven fire and service calls in the township, responded to five-hundred-and-two emergency medical responses, we saw a total of five-hundred-and-eight patients, and we transported three-hundred-and-seventy-two times to local hospitals. The department completed one-thousand-five-hundred-and-two hours of training, participated in twenty-six public education details, we had sixty hours of paramedic, EMT, doctor ride time on the, on the paramedic units, completed seventy-three fire safety inspections, and had eleven joint inspections with the Claremont County Building Department, and that concludes my report.
Chief, you guys had a tremendous suburban fire over off Teal Town, and I don't know how much you're allowed to talk about it, but that does not happen very often in Union Township, and so, your team was on it, I happened to be right there, and so I went out and saw for myself, and saw your team in action, just wanted to please just pass along how great of a job they did, so.
Yeah, I mean, you know, and it's kind of unusual that it was an early evening run, and you usually don't see fires get that much of a head start, especially in a subdivision like that, but in this particular case, the fire started on the outside of the house, on the rear deck area, wooden deck area, it went up the backside of the house, and we've seen that a couple times tonight, and just coincidentally, Sunday morning at four a.m., we had a similar fire, not as big, but on the clean drive in Cherry Grove, same way, started on a rear deck, went up the back, and it gets into the attic. The one that you're referring to off of Teal Town, there was a gentleman home on the second floor, he had no idea that the house was on fire, so it had gone up the outside, goes into the soffit, goes into the attic space, plenty of dry lumber in the attic space, and it's burning, and people always say, well, you know, the smoke detectors didn't work, or they didn't go off, well, of course, they're, they're there to detect smoke and fire in the living space of the house, in those cases, you have fire and smoke on the outside of the house, or in the attic space, where there's not typically any detection, so they get a big head start on us, and that one got a big head start, and you saw the results.
Mr. Becker, gentlemen, sir?
Just on that same line of question, I guess in both cases, you said they both started on the outside, like how, what, do we know?
Um, yeah, in the particular case, the one on Teal Town, that was electrical, there was wiring issues on the outside that went around the back of the house and under the deck, that's exposed to the elements, and over time deteriorated, and that, and the other one was a portable fire pit, that they were, they're burning wood in it the night before, up till early in the morning, and went to bed, and the fire pit was not extinguished, and it caught the wood deck on fire, and burnt the deck, up the steps, up the back of the house, and into the attic.
Wow, okay, thank you.
Mr. Luke?
Thank you, chief, appreciate it.
Thanks, chief. Moving on to our police department, Lieutenant Scott Blankenship, sir?
Thank you, trustee Dills. For the month of May, the Administrative Services Communication Division handled four-thousand-nine-hundred-and-thirty-five calls for service from police, fire and EMS, for a total of five-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty five. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thanks, chief. Moving on to our police department, Lieutenant Scott Blankenship, sir?
Thank you, trustee Dills. For the month of May, the Administrative Services Communication Division handled four-thousand-nine-hundred-and-thirty-five calls for service from police, fire and EMS, for a total of five-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty-five five. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, chief, appreciate it.
Thanks, chief. Moving on to our police department, Lieutenant Scott Blankenship, sir?
Thank you, trustee Dills. For the month of May, the Administrative Services Communication Division handled four-thousand-nine-hundred-and-thirty-five calls for service from police, fire and EMS, for a total of five-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty-five five. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, chief, appreciate it.
Thanks, chief. Moving on to our police department, Lieutenant Scott Blankenship, sir?
Thank you, trustee Dills. For the month of May, the Administrative Services Communication Division handled four-thousand-nine-hundred-and-thirty-five calls for service from police, fire and EMS, for a total of five-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty-five five. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, chief, appreciate it.
Thanks, chief. Moving on to our police department, Lieutenant Scott Blankenship, sir?
Thank you, trustee Dills. For the month of May, the Administrative Services Communication Division handled four-thousand-nine-hundred-and-thirty-five calls for service from police, fire and EMS, for a total of five-thousand-four-hundred-and-fifty-five five. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you, chief, appreciate it.
Thanks, chief. Moving on to our police department, Lieutenant Scott Blankenship, sir?
Thank you, trustee Dills.
In the roads division, a total of 23 work orders were completed on 20 township roads and staff started the roadside mowing within the public right away, with the new arm mower. Uh, in the parks division, staff provided setup and cleanup at a concert at the civic center on May 27th and the fishing tournament, uh, which I know we previously spoke about, uh, was at Clepper Park. Uh, they, they helped with that as well. So staff planted the flowers at the civic center and the police department and ball field maintenance was completed at, uh, both township parks. And, uh, that concludes our report.
Mr. Chella, thank you for that. And, uh, please, uh, pass along and Mr. Ebright, oh, is, is, did he take off or no?
He did.
Okay. But, uh, a lot of times that can be a thankless job. You know, we have our concerts, now we have our fishing tournaments, now we have our movie nights and, and that can sometimes be a thankless job for them because they have to stay out after hours to have the leaves and then make sure our facilities and our grounds are, are clean and clear and good to go. So, uh, just please pass along our thanks.
I will.
Yeah, thank you, sir. Mr. Becker?
I'm good, thanks.
Mr. Luke?
Um, yeah, Mr. Taylor, just, uh, the fishing tournament, uh, just exciting to see that stuff going on. Big thanks to you and the team for supporting, getting that done. Saw Mr. Campbell out there with his granddaughter and I was able to bring, uh, my boys out there for a little bit for the fishing tournament and, uh, looking forward to everything as you guys continue to execute the schedule. And I am personally hearing great feedback from the community regarding their excitement and interest and they're just like, all of a sudden, like, wow, I didn't know Union Township has these things. And it's just, it's really cool to be walking on the street and talking to the community like that and know that there's an impact being made and that they're excited about it. So relay that to the team as well.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir.
Well said, Mr. Luke. I can't believe, I was gone for two weeks for the Air Force and, and I missed our trustee meeting, I missed our police banquet and I missed our fishing tournament, all in two weeks, you know? Yeah.
That is how the military does it, too. You know that.
Oh, goodness, the, uh, all right, moving along to our planning and zoning, uh, with our development director, Mr. Mark McCormick, sir?
For the month of May, we had 52 inspections, 15 complaints, eight unfounded complaints, nine warning citations, two 15-day non-compliance letters sent out, no, no 30-day violation letters, no referrals to the attorney, um, eight cases resolved with or without action, 452 illegal signs removed, 11 miscellaneous issues, 25 violations for the month, nine re-inspections of violations and one nuisance. For permit activity, we had one commercial permit, seven changes of use, nine signs, one temporary sales, one temporary trailer and sign, seven single-family dwellings, five additions, seven decks, 10 accessory permits, 28 pools or fence permits, for a total of 76 permits and a revenue of $9,851, uh, with the fire department revenue for the month being $875. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Uh, largest month so far on record, 452 illegal signs removed, is that right?
Yes.
Well, for this year, on record for this year.
Yes.
I think there were more last year. But, uh, clearly they don't get the point, do they?
No.
So, uh, Mr. Becker, do you have anything, sir?
Nope, good, thanks.
Mr. Luke?
No, thank you. Appreciate it.
Perfect. Thank you, Mr. McCormick. And then, uh, moving on to our administrations report, our township administrator, Ms. Susan Ayers.
Thank you, sir. Um, quite a few things going on here recently. Um, first of all, just some scheduling notes. Um, thankfully, we've had a lot going on in the zoning and construction season, so we have had a fair amount of zoning hearings, have one scheduled for tonight, also calling for a special meeting for the purposes of hearing zoning cases on June the 22nd. At that time, we will hear four cases. Um, with that, though, we will move the June work session to July 25th at 6:00 PM. Um, at that time, my initial plan is to discuss ARPA funds, community survey results and implementation of priority projects. So we'll be, um, discussing the results of the community survey, the, um, priorities that we discussed at, uh, one of our previous work sessions, as well as, um, what remains in ARPA funds and how we want to allocate to meet those goals. Um, newsletter was out, I believe, since the last time, but we have moved printing companies to help address some of the issues that were going on previously. Um, as everyone, I'm sure, well aware, construction season is in full force, particularly with traffic. Um, Route 32 traffic has been closed at Glen Estee-Withamsville as they start the flyover construction process. ODOT has signed up on their website, um, linked through our social media, you can get to, to get notifications via text or email for project milestones and road closures, diversions. The I-Cold expansion is continuing, um, they should be starting shortly with the, um, project, um, on, behind the East Gate Square area. A few other issues I wanted to bring up. First of all, um, had a few openings this month, welcome to the New Mike's Car Wash and the Beauty Artistry Academy. Um, also had an issue come up this month about, um, mowing grass in township-owned lots particularly. Um, we do not own a lot of residential property, but we do have, um, at least one. Previously, it's my understanding, the zoning code has been interpreted to require regular mowing. That's been previously said for once a month or for our lots. Um, help, the code actually is looser on that, requires, I think it's three, six months or so. Um, higher revised code has some, um, standards on eight inches of grass. Wanted to inform the board, we have a new policy going out that we'll be mowing our residential lots every, uh, twice a month or as needed to make sure that they're maintained in the way we need them to be maintained. Um, did want to use this, though, um, just to throw out the idea of, one of the options we also have is to look at a property maintenance code, um, like we have a zoning resolution, um, to give us some more power and ability to regulate how some of these properties are maintained and address some of those issues. So I'll be pushing out some information this month to trustees about what that might look like. Um, just wanted to put that out there and see if that's, wants to be a priority for the board. We can look at addressing that to address some of these issues a little bit more efficiently. Um, one of the other items I have, I'm going to exit out of here, as some people may have known, our new website went up last night.
Love it.
Um, so we are pleased, this has been a lot of work, uh, from our staff. Thanks to Brandon Miller, Lieutenant Blankenship, Mr. McCormick for helping me spearhead this effort and, um, with this, each department has a representative that, um, worked with us to learn how to maintain and update the site and has spent, uh, a lot of time and effort going through all the information we had previously, making sure it was reorganized and developed in a way that we hope is a lot more user-friendly and intuitive, um, and will provide some additional services to the township. I just wanted to go over a few things briefly while we had everyone here. Um, as you'll notice, uh, the idea is to try and make information as easy to get to as possible. First thing I want to direct your attention to are these middle buttons. Um, hopefully these, we've looked at some of the analytics for our previous website about what information was most accessed and tried to put it right here in the middle so that people could get to what they wanted as quickly as possible. Meeting center will take you to, um, all of the agendas, minutes and links to the YouTube for each of our board of trustee meetings, the board of zoning appeals, the parks and recreation committee and the CIC and the zoning commission. So hopefully that will put, uh, immediate access for people that want to know more about our meetings and what we've discussed. Um, notifications is a great feature for which, um, people can sign up and get, um, email and text notifications for a whole list of topics, so whether that's our community events that are coming up, um, any item that's put on the township calendar, as well as when new agendas and meetings are posted for any of our boards and commissions. Or at the bottom, there's, um, items for news flash, um, there's one general for the township and one for the police department. So would give us another opportunity to push out information quickly to residents that may be needed. I'd urge everyone to go out and sign up, um, for as many notifications as you're interested in, but particularly that, um, news flash section, I think, will be important in pushing out information as we move forward. Um, we also have the front page ability to report a concern of the citizen request tracker. Um, we've also picked out our, uh, top issues that we receive, um, concerns and questions about and put a form here so that you can, um, quickly log in and report any of these concerns and it'll get, uh, fed electronically to the right staff and department. Um, and then you'll get follow-up emails from that as well. Uh, recreation provides, uh, a direct link to our parks and facilities that you can use. Facility reservation, um, is the automation of how we are reserving all of our meeting rooms and some of the park shelters. So when you go on here, you'll be able to notice all of the facilities that have available reservations, what, um, facilities they have there, some pictures of, um, what the facility looks like. And then you'll actually be able to go on to these individual rooms and make a reservation request that will be automatically be, um, funneled to the right staff member. So it should automate that process and make it a little easier for everyone to see. The meeting rooms and rules for that regulation are, are on each site, as well as a calendar for you to look and see if your date, um, that you're looking for is available at this point in time. Also have, uh, frequently asked questions and documents, um, so this is going to be the repository for, um, staff to push out what questions we get most frequently. I imagine this will be, um, changing and updated as we get, um, continue to get questions and we look at the new site, but just a place for us to put those kind of top questions and answers. Um, urge everyone to go on and, uh, explore a bit, but there should be, um, sites for all of the major departments, all of our, um, entities that we serve, um, information from each department, information from our business community, um, as well as community calendars, events, um, information on different topics that we put out. And then, um, eventually it'll be, uh, job applications, anything you would want to sign up for from the, the township. Also just wanted to point out under the government, the transparency center, uh, I imagine this will also be a forever updating, um, document, but this part of the website gives you quick access to our most used documents, rules, regulations. You'll see resolutions, special presentations, cash position, statements, annual reports, zoning resolution, permits, forms, so on. Um, also gives links to the public records requests, submitting a request, um, the open checkbook, the state of Ohio sunshine laws, um, so that people are aware. Um, so we're really excited to have that up there as well. Um, there is a chance for, uh, residents to create their own sign-in so they can personalize what information they, um, want to see first and how they want to be presented information. This will also help if you want to make, um, citizen requests to fix things that you can get automatic feedback from that. So just wanted to thank the staff for taking time and for the trustees for supporting this project. I think it's going to be ultimately a great use for, um, pushing out information and presenting a more modern look for the township. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Ms. Ayers, very well done. Great exclamation and everything. I love the website and, and I assume, is it pretty easy to tweak up? Because obviously, is it easy to tweak as we move in the future?
One of the things I loved about this particular platform is the ease of maintenance.
Yeah.
So, you know, I joked that if I could do it, then almost anybody on our staff can.
Sure.
Um, and so we, we had a bunch of staff take training and things that we're looking forward to.
Love it, love it. Awesome, that's great. Um, as far as, you, you brought up mowing, um, how many residential lots, do you have any idea how many we currently own? I know we bought the one for the, for the flooding issue.
I think currently it's just one. Mr. Taylor, I think it's.
Two?
I don't even want to classify it, but yes, one, essentially.
Okay, okay. And so, and you were bringing up the topic of, of zoning a regulation for our township as far as enforcing people to mow their grass, is that right?
Um, yeah. One of the complaints we do get, I wouldn't say often, but I would say regularly, is, um, people with concerns about how their neighbors are maintaining lots, um, you know, tall grass, weeds, things like that, um, failing to maintain, uh, business lots and things. And a property maintenance, um, resolution could help to address some of those concerns.
Fair enough. I, kind of guy, I like to extend a handshake first, maybe just door knock, you know, maybe our zoning department can, I just don't like, I, I want, I want our community to look very good, obviously, clean and pretty, but, uh, I just don't want to be the, the grass police, if that makes sense, you know? And so, um, but, okay, I'll, I'll, you know, I'll entertain listening to it, but, and, and, but we can't hold folks to a standard if we're not going to keep our own one lot to the same standard. So, Mr. Taylor, is it an issue at all, spreading, you guys thin it all to, to keep that one lot maintained?
No.
Okay. Is it just the one lot that we bought for the, the flooding issue?
Almost.
Yeah, right? Okay, okay, okay. Um, I did want to get, because I've, I've had a lot of folks reach out to me. Ms. Ayers, can you, can you confirm our concerts, um, the time, 7:00 or 7:30 and?
Usually should always start at 7:30.
7:30? Okay, just wanted to confirm. Okay, perfect. Uh, that's all I got. Uh, Mr. Becker, go ahead.
I'll just comment on, on the website. So just a little history, I, I've been hearing from the public for a long time, a lot of people hate the website. I personally have also hated the website. So I'm not the only one up here who's always hated the website. So when we decided to get rid of that website, go to a new one, redesign something, the, the, what is now the previous website that we all hated, kept getting worse because now the motivation to maintain it continued to go down as we're getting closer to launching the new one. So, so now it's great, the new one is up. So what I'm asking the public for is, is feedback. If you find any broken links, misinformation, anything wrong, let us know, because we may not have found it yet. And now this website's a lot easier to update. So we should be able to get these things, um, fixed easily. So we just need to hear from you what the problems are, because we might not, uh, we might not know about it. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. Mr. Luke?
Yeah, uh, I'll just share quickly, um, to the board as well. Uh, Ms. Ayers, I, when we attended the Ohio Township Association Winter Conference earlier this year, property maintenance was something that we discussed as far as that goes for property maintenance resolution. I'll tell you, my perspective on that is, uh, I think it's, uh, be a good thing for our township, a good way to set a standard. I don't think you come off as feeling like the grass police. Uh, we, we already have nuisance abatement properties that basically, that's what we're doing there, but it's, um, ability to have a higher standard, uh, which I think if you think about a lot of areas, you've ever heard concerns from residents around the township about, hey, what's going on with that building, this building, it looks rough, or it's a commercial business, but it looks rough. This is something where the property maintenance can give some enforceability to be able to actually take, take a good stance and clean up the township. So it's kind of the term of fighting blight. That would help. So, um, and, um, uh, real quick, the, um, open checkbook, uh, that is, Ms. Ayers, uh, thanks for always keeping that up to date, um, and for the public knowledge, that's where you can see where every dollar gets spent. That's something that three years ago I, I started talking about, uh, that residents get to see where every dollar gets spent. Uh, so it's a transparency tool that we brought to the township three years ago. Um, oddly enough, there was a, uh, point made earlier about, about $10,000 figure. Um, gentlemen, I just want to share, and I think, uh, I had a, a comment here that I wanted to make as far as, um, coming into tonight's meeting, that I think that we should consider, uh, some emergency procurement directive for our directors for. community to look very good, obviously, clean and pretty, but I just don't want to be the grass police, if that makes sense, you know? And so, but, okay, I'll, you know, I'll entertain listening to it, but, and, but we can't hold folks to a standard if we're not going to keep our own one lot to the same standard. So, Mr. Taylor, is it an issue at all? Are you guys thin it all to keep that one lot maintained?
No.
Okay. Is it just the one lot that we bought for the flooding issue?
Almost.
Yeah, right. Okay, okay, okay. I did want to get, because I've had a lot of folks reach out to me. Ms. Ayers, can you, can you confirm our concerts, the time, seven or 7:30?
Usually should always start at 7:30.
7:30. Okay, just wanted to confirm. Okay, perfect. That's all I got. Mr. Becker, go ahead.
I'll just comment on the website. So just a little history. I've been hearing from the public for a long time, a lot of people hate the website. I personally have also hated the website. So I'm not the only one up here who's always hated the website. So when we decided to get rid of that website, go to a new one, redesign something, what is now the previous website that we all hated, kept getting worse because now the motivation to maintain it continued to go down as we're getting closer to launching the new one. So now it's great, the new one is up. So what I'm asking the public for is feedback. If you find any broken links, misinformation, anything wrong, let us know, because we may not have found it yet. And now this website's a lot easier to update. So we should be able to get these things fixed easily. So we just need to hear from you what the problems are because we might not, we might not know about it. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. Mr. Luke?
Yeah, I'll just share quickly to the board as well. Ms. Ayers, when we attended the Ohio Township Association Winter Conference earlier this year, property maintenance was something that we discussed as far as that goes for property maintenance resolution. I'll tell you, my perspective on that is, I think it's, it'd be a good thing for our township, a good way to set a standard. I don't think you come off as feeling like the grass police. We already have nuisance abatement properties that basically, that's what we're doing there, but it's an ability to have a higher standard, which I think if you think about a lot of areas, you've ever heard concerns from residents around the township about, hey, what's going on with that building, this building, it looks rough, or it's a commercial business, but it looks rough. This is something where the property maintenance can give some enforceability to be able to actually take, take a good stance and clean up the township. So it's kind of the term of fighting blight. That would help. So, and real quick, the open checkbook, that is, Ms. Ayers, thanks for always keeping that up to date. And for the public knowledge, that's where you can see where every dollar gets spent. That's something that three years ago I started talking about, that residents get to see where every dollar gets spent. So it's a transparency tool that we brought to the township three years ago. Oddly enough, there was a point made earlier about, about $10,000 figure. Gentlemen, I just want to share, and I think, I had a comment here that I wanted to make as far as coming into tonight's meeting, that I think that we should consider some emergency procurement directive for our directors for when things are excessive of $10,000. For example, air conditioning or something may be an issue within where personnel are housed, or what it may be, that they need to move faster than a board of trustees meeting. And let me level set things. When $10,000 was the limit to the internal township policy for reporting at this meeting and talking about, the actual State of Ohio threshold for being public disclosure and voted on was $25,000. That has since raised to $50,000 where it is at now. And in the omnibus budget for the state right now, there is language that is moving forward to raise it to $75,000. So, well, I'll share with my board members here and to Ms. Ayers, I think it's a point of reference that we should maybe take some research on. What is adequate for emergency authorization type of for our directors, but then also, $10,000 is basically, if you think about it, $10,000 out of $25,000, $10,000 out of $50,000, $10,000, $75,000. We keep lowering basically that threshold and we're seeing more and more and more at public meetings. And it may not be as significant and as impactful as it was when it was previously $25,000 as the threshold. That's just simple math based off of inflation and rising costs of things. So something as a policy conversation, I think, just think on. So, and to that point, you'll see where staff, this is something I've had for a long time with me, actually an addendum here, you'll see where staff routinely have, I've got, I'm just going to share a couple of numbers with you gentlemen. June 4th, 2020, $9,719 to McCormick Equipment. September 15th, 2021, $9,963 to 911 Fleet and Fire Management, or Fleet and Fire Equipment. February 20th, 2020, McCormick Equipment Company, $9,908.5. October 7th, JK Muir Company got $9,935 road repairs. And then JK Muir Company, November 24th, 2021, I know this is before you gentlemen were on the board here, but I think I'm just sharing a perspective of history. $10,000 to the, to the dollar amount was on the addendum and was not, these are all items that were not basically brought to the Diaz or purchase order or request because it was $10,000 and below. So historically, you'll see where staff is executing towards something, but they're staying within their threshold when they need to get things done. So I think it may make sense that, again, Ms. Ayers, if we just take a look at what, what makes sense there.
And, Mr. Luke, would you mind, Mr. Campbell comments real quick? Yes, please, please, Mr. Campbell.
So, so let's be clear about this. It's, it's over $10,000. This is something that I instituted. And the reason I did it was for transparency and clarity. And the idea was that if we were spending large amounts of money, that all the trustees for sure would know who we're spending the money with. I did this a long time ago. Ten, over $10,000 was an arbitrary number, but I did that for a reason. So we can make that number whatever we want. Item 17 of the reorganization meeting that we do every January, item 17 gives the administrator that authority to spend money up to $10,000 with no authorization from anyone. It's already, it's already a part of the reorganization meetings that the trustees approved. Emergency situations, there are things out there called then and now statements, super blankets that we can do. So there's already provisions in the code that allows you to do spot buys for emergency situations. So it's not like that wherever our hands are tied. We've got the ability to do that now. So, but I just wanted to talk about the $10,000. That was one of the questions Mr. Hicks had today. And then the other piece of it was, he said the addendum wasn't updated. That's because they're working on the website. So as soon as the website gets rolling, which looks like we're there now, it'll be updated. That's all I got. Thank you, Mr. Campbell.
Mr. Luke, anything else?
Just last, Ms. Ayers, do you have something you were...
Just with regards to the emergency procurement, I think we should take a look at some, maybe some internal policy options so that we know what's available and that we are following the policy in a unified manner when those items come up, because I'm not sure that's been done up to this point in time.
Yeah. Thank you, Ms. Ayers. That's, that's kind of my takeaway with that, was our updating some internal policy. But then, yeah, final thing is just the, gentlemen, I, you know, to this board, I started talking about the website four years ago. So thank you for your support behind what got done here with this website. Staff, thank you from bottom of my heart. Community, thank you for trusting the township and the board to be able to execute and be able to take, you know, new trajectory on things. The website is very exciting to have for transparency, accountability, communication with the public. And just, I'm grateful to the staff and everyone that worked on it. So thank you very much. Thank you.
Ms. Ayers. Excuse me. Thank you, Mr. Luke. Okay, we will move on to our public hearing section.
Mr. Campbell, can I ask Mr. Campbell a question before we move on? The $10,000, would you recommend changing that number?
We can change it. I can make the number whatever you want. All I'm trying to let everyone know is why it was instituted. It was over $10,000. And the idea was that we would discuss those so that the board knew where we were spending larger amounts of money. $10,000, now there's legislation, right now, it's probably going to take it to $75,000 per statute. But if you want to, if you want to change it, we can change that anytime.
Can I ask you a question, Mr. Campbell?
Sure.
And Mr. Becker, if you don't mind. When you instituted that, was everything digital as well? Because I'm aware every time I get the addendum, I'm reviewing every line item, regardless of what the dollar amount is.
It was not. And then, and that is, and here was the holdup. And when I always ask about how many meetings do we need to have? For me, we need to do one meeting a month. That's all I need, because I'm sending you the addendums. We do it every week. You get the addendums on Thursday, you approve them, we pay bills every Friday. The township pays bills every Friday.
Okay. So that, so that's another part of the process to kind of think about from an internal process of that transparency was not there previously. Because I've heard this with other townships where it's, you're doing things with wet signature and getting people to stop in, and it's a logistical, but we're very efficient and effective.
And originally, that's what we had. So we had, we had meetings twice a month. And then the reason was, I needed the addendums signed before I could pay the bills.
Okay.
So now with, with docu-sign, we do that every week. We pay bills every Friday.
Okay.
So, you know, I think that's a legitimate suggestion to possibly increase that $10,000. I don't know what the right number would be. I guess we could have that conversation if it, you know, 15, 20, 30, whatever. But as I'm looking over the current list of requisitions that are over $10,000, you know, let's say we increase the number from 10 to 15,000. What is one on here? That happens to be $14,999.5. So if we do that, we'll be accused of trying to hide something, which happens to the outside evidence storage building. So we'd be trying to hide for, you know, for political reasons. You know, these things, these accusations are going to occur, no matter what the number is.
Well, and I don't think it's to that point, but it's just the fact that you look at the website right now and you look at the fact that we're on Ohio Open Checkbook, Mr. Campbell, right? Every expense, every, we are more transparent as a government now than we have ever been in the history of Union Township based off of the website and the Ohio checkbook, and these tools are in place. So if you've got everything wide open, I mean, everything's wide open. I mean, there's no, there's no, there's no concern. So.
Would you suggest eliminating the, this all together?
I, I, I think we're, I think it's, I think we're getting a little off the agenda path right now. And I think that we want to set it maybe as discussion, let Ms. Ayers and the team do a little research, let them recommend bringing something up. I was just thinking something to think on from a board perspective. Again, this, you see, heard Mr. Campbell's background on that, why he established and set that. And then statutorily, went from $25,000 to $50,000, and right now we're in the midst of it going to $75,000. So, I mean, it's like, I think it's a question that's multitude of different things, but if we're more transparent now than ever. And it's a, frankly, it's a regulation that is, is more government better or less government? I mean...
So, gentlemen, let me, let me do this. Let me do this. I think the majority of all these folks here are here for this zoning case that is on the next item.
Yeah.
So let's talk about this. Either A, I would say when we have our working session to have some open dialogue, or, or at the end, we have public comments, or we have our own trustee comments. But if it's okay with both of you, let's move forward and let these folks...
Thank you, Mr. Trimmer.
Say their piece at 7 o'clock. Okay. So, there are two public hearings, and I'm going to try to do this in layman's terms the best I can. In case you want to speak at both, that's fine, or if you just want to speak at one specifically. So the first zoning case I'm going to open up is for Union Township Zoning Case 4-23-Z as in Zulu. And I'll read this real quick. It is a request for a zone map amendment filed by applicant Prim Damijah. I hope I'm not pronouncing that wrong. My apologies.
Yes.
Damijah, okay. For 1.217 acres to be zoned from R2 Single Family Residential to PD Plan Development District with regards to parcels 213, 214, E as in Echo 001, parcel number 413, 214, E as in Echo 006, A as in Alpha, 413, 214, E as in Echo 008, A as in Alpha, 413, 214, E as in Echo 010, A as in Alpha, property located at 4127 and 4137 Mount Carmel Tabasco Road and Old Orchard Lane. So this is for the property, the smaller of the two property. The other zoning case, same owners, I'm reading, looks like, but it's about seven acres. This one's the one that is on 1.2 acres. Just want to make sure you know, if you're for it or against it, just want to make sure you know what zoning case is for which one. So I'm going to go open this case up. And first off, we'll start with anyone that is for this development. And then we'll get anyone that is against this development right after that.
Open comments.
What's that?
Let Mark do some open comments.
Oh, Mr. McCormick, my apologies, sir. Can you please introduce this case, Mr. McCormick? I'm off my game tonight. I'm sorry. Sorry, sir.
Sure. So we went over the nature of the case quite well, and so I won't repeat that part of the staff report. It's on this particular slide as well. The location of the subject property is 4127 Mount Carmel Tabasco Road, along with some unaddressed property on Old Orchard Drive. It's on the west side of Mount Carmel Tabasco Road in the southwestern quadrant of Union Township. The zoning of the subject property, as you mentioned, was R2 Single Family Residential. Land surrounding it is R2 to the southeast, west, and to the north. We have Plan Development District for that parcel. There's a little bit to the south, a little further away, we've got some commercial zoning approaching State Route 125. With respect to the 2030 Conference Land Use Plan, the proposal is located within the Mount Carmel Tabasco Mixed Use Corridor. Currently, the northern portion of the corridor contains a variety of commercial quasi-institutional uses and varying intensity residential uses. Limited development, redevelopment has occurred in some areas of the corridor since the adoption of the plan. Mount Carmel Tabasco Road is a minor two-alter, material two-lane roadway with traffic volume of approximately 10,200 average daily trips in this area. We have significant residential populations in this area, and the lack of sidewalks results in a safety issue for those seeking alternative modes of transportation. Among other things, the plan calls for sidewalks in this area, the use of cross-axis easements and consolidated drive, shared driveway configurations where impractical. Site development to be conducted in a manner that focuses on maximizing land use efficiency within field development. For commercial development or conversions, use of traditional building materials, adequate vegetated buffering and landscaping strategies along shared property lines and landscaping enhancements along the corridor fringes required. So, this slide here shows you the property configuration. This slide here shows you the property configuration along with the road maintenance. You can see Old Orchard Lane is a township road, and Mount Carmel Tabasco is a county road. And this is the oblique, kind of a three-dimensional view here. So with respect to our zoning resolution, we are referencing Sections 680 to 684 and 687. We've got the purpose of the PD District laid out in Section 680. We've got what happens in 681 if a conflict arises between a PD, a plan, and other sections of the resolution, that the PD regulations do prevail. Section 682, land use free property in PD Districts should be consistent with the use design details contained in the approved PD Plan for that property and any conditions of approval, and can contain B1 and M1 types of uses, along with those that are substantially similar as determined by the Zoning Commission and Board of Trustees. Section 683, property owner may submit an application for zone change to PD, which is laying out the process for this. And Section 684 enumerates the elements that are required in the submittal, which includes a site plan and landscaping plan. Section 687 is supplemental provisions, which I did not include in that slide, but consist of things like signage, parking requirements, building lot area coverage, building separation, et cetera. The slide that you see here is the most up-to-date plan. The outlined area is the 1.2 acres plus that is involved with the Zone Map Amendment. Again, the Zone Map Amendment is to go from R2 to Plan Development District, and that is the entirety of this particular case. The case that follows involves this property potentially, if the rezone is approved. If it's not approved, then it would be not part of the second case that would be heard after this. This Zone Map Amendment, the reason for the proposed change is for one eight-unit multifamily dwelling unit to be placed on the property along with parking, and to be incorporated within the existing Bellevue apartment complex or facility, community there, to the north of the outlined property. And I've noted within this application, we have a proposed amendment that involves this case, which is the second case, which is case 3-13-Z. After reviewing the application, it can be noted that the PD District has been identified in the comp plan as the preferred method to achieve the goals of our land use mixed use in the corridor, and therefore presents an opportunity for construction of a development of buffers and complements to surrounding land uses. Furthermore, the PD designation allows for greater flexibility in site design, promotes high-quality aesthetics through deployment of monument signage, landscaping, enhanced facade materials, and innovative site design. And thus, since then, the proposal is consistent with the adopted land use plan. And further, the applicant's proposal is consistent, land densities with the existing development. The proposed development incorporates an existing multifamily development with a proposal of eight units, which amounts to a density of 6.9 units per acre. The proposed stormwater system is designed to be integrated with the existing facilities located to the northwest, which is shown here in this area that I'm circling on the slide right now. So there's an existing detention basin that would be modified if there's an expansion of development, and the stormwater would go to that existing detention basin. The proposed buildings are two-story all-brick multifamily structures, or I'm sorry, is, in this case, a singular two-story all-brick multifamily structure that is 200 feet off Mount Carmel Tabasco Road. It would be 20 feet from the nearest residential property. Each unit is proposed to be 1,300 square feet and consists of two bedrooms and two full bathrooms. Proposed lighting in this application consists of illuminated front corners, as wall pack units that are downward directed. Extended sidewalks are proposed for the site along Mount Carmel Tabasco Road. Landscaping has been provided within this application along the parking lot and the proposed drive off of Old Orchard Lane, which is an emergency access. I'll come back to that in a moment. There are no plans for the, noted for the existing residential property located at 4127 Mount Carmel Tabasco Road, which is where you'll see a house is currently located. However, the staff is recommending demolition of this home to keep the uses uniform on the property. And I'll come back to that Zoning Commission met on April 26, 2023 to review this request for a zoning map amendment. At that time, the commission voted unanimously to approve the applicant's request of the board of trustees with respect to the rezone of the subject property from R2 to Plan Development. The recommended modifications I'll go for, I'll discuss at the very end of this presentation. And for the moment, I'll go into the slides from the site inspections. So this slide shows existing conditions, looking towards the existing housing as you enter the property from the existing access off of Mount Carmel Tabasco Road, looking northwest. This is looking southeast, back towards Mount Carmel Tabasco Road, from the existing housing. You can see the house that is there on the right is the existing house that we're proposing to be demolished if this case moves forward or is approved. This is if you rotate to the right of the last picture, looking from southeast to south, at the, looking from the existing housing. This is looking from the affected area towards the house on the corner of Old Orchard Lane and Mount Carmel Tabasco Road, looking east. This is out by the proposed access on Old Orchard Lane, looking east towards Mount Carmel Tabasco Road. Old Orchard Lane, I think, is, if I remember correctly, about 18 feet wide in that area. This is looking west, in the opposite direction on Old Orchard Lane. The site would be on the right. This is looking north towards the site. This is looking north towards the site, the proposed rezone. This is looking west, essentially across the site, towards the development on, uh, existing development on Old Orchard Lane. And this is looking east from a different perspective from the affected property towards Mount Carmel Tabasco Road. And this is looking towards the detention area towards the northwest that is under the overhead power lines. And this is looking towards the existing housing to the northeast, uh, where there would be a proposed tie-in from the proposed development to the existing development. Recommended modifications that were included in the motion and, um, staff report, staff report modific- uh, recommended modifications were modified a little bit and there were two additional items added and those are what you see here in this particular slide. The applicant will need to address any concerns from related other agencies and departments. Uh, we may need a science plan to be submitted if applicable with a height being no more than eight feet finished grade for any monument signage. We have landscape buffer, we need to incorporate mounting techniques along the, along with evergreen plantings to help increase screening between residential multifamily uses. Uh, the applicant has submitted updated, uh, landscape plan. I would have to analyze that a little bit, I think the mounting, uh, may not be included, but there were some additional evergreen plant and plantings included within the plan you saw earlier, uh, as in comparison to what was presented at the zoning commission hearing in April. Uh, we may need some final open space calculations and percentages on the plans. Uh, the existing home at 4127 Mount Carmel Tabasco Road would need to be demolished, which was acceptable to the applicant. The proposed access from Old Orchard Lane, uh, shall be for emergency access only and there's a minimum 20-foot setback to be recognized and required from the proposed building to all property boundary locations, which the, the, uh, plans were modified for the zoning commission hearing to meet that 20-foot setback. Uh, the only other item I was going to go over, two items I guess I'm going to go over, yeah, the action required in this case in accordance with sections 411 through 412 and sections 680 and 687 of the zoning resolution, the Board of Trustees' role in this process is either to enter a motion to recommend approval, approval with some modifications, or denial of the applicant's request to rezon the subject property as submitted and/or with any further modifications as deemed appropriate. This case, as, as I mentioned earlier, was heard by the Plan Commission in April. It normally would have gone to the May meeting. The applicant for this case, um, submitted a letter in writing to be, have the case deferred until June and that's the reason why it did not come at the May meeting. We did receive a letter today from a, uh, law firm, uh, Wooden Lamping and, um, actually called the attorney because there are two cases referenced in the, uh, letter that we received. Neither case was referenced, um, correctly. After talking to the attorney, the attorney, I think, was trying to really write a letter that's more applicable to the next case, not necessarily the rezoned. Um, he represents the Old Orchard Unit Owners Association and this, this application here does not abut that particular property, the next application does.
Got it. Mr. McCormick, can you pull up an aerial of what we're looking at?
I think I passed it. Is that right there?
No, 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 like actual, like a goo- Google image, okay. Yeah, right there, right there, okay. Okay.
If you have one, it's a little further zoomed out, if you want to use that one.
Perfect, yeah, that's great, thank you. When I, when we go to trustee comments, we make sure to put it back there in case anyone else wants a different slide. Okay. Thank you, Mr. McCormick, for all that explanation, very much, thank you. Uh, okay, we will go and open up this case, I've already announced it, I'm not going to go through all those numbers and letters again. Uh, so with that being said, we're going to go ahead and open this case up for anyone that is, uh, for this, uh, case and, uh, to be approved and then, um, I just got to swear whoever speaks in, so come on up, whoever. Mr. Urban? I got to swear yes, this is a public zoning case. Sir, you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so if you got it?
I do, so, oh my God.
Thank you, sir. And then please state your name and address for the record, sir.
My name is Carl Hartman, engineer. I am representing the client, Prem, and, uh, my address is 3478 Holly Ridge Drive, Cincinnati, Ohio 45245. I will start off in, in agreement with Mr. Becker about the quality of your EMS and fire protection service in the township. I personally have taken use of it three times of chief diamond staff and crew and each time they have done an excellent job in that regard. One was a fire, two was EMS runs. Anyway, I have a lot to say here tonight and some of the, what I present will apply to particularly this case, some of it could apply to both cases in that regard. So it's hard for me to draw all the exact line as to where to go. But you have to go back in history, everything changes every day, we all know that. In 1959, November 1959, the citizens of Union Township voted in zoning for the township. At that time, the zoning resolution was about 20 pages. That's when I moved in to Union Township in May of 1961. Today, when I checked into the zoning resolution, there's 202 pages to your zoning resolution as we sit here tonight. So it's grown, the, the types of zones have changed, many, many changes have done in that. And that, it, part of that allows us to request changes from the original zoning, that's why we're here tonight. This property was zoned originally R2, single-family residence, which occupies principal property there. Uh, Prem has already purchased that property, so he is the owner of record of that property. The other three properties that are front on Old Orchard are under contract to purchase. He doesn't own those at the present time, but he has the equity interest in those parcels. Uh, where do we start? Uh, on the site plan, we've taken some of the comments from the zoning commission meeting and have incorporated those into the site plan. If you, could you bring up the site plan, please? We have taken and converted the, uh, full access drive that we had planned onto Old Orchard into an emergency access only to be, uh, serviced by a breakaway gate atmosphere. We have taken the, uh, landscaping that we had parallel to Old Orchard and have made that a more higher and a more dense, uh, landscape so that we provide a greater buffer between that and the adjacent properties on the other side of the road. The, we've moved the building to adhere to the 20-foot setback at that one corner. Uh, we've taken the lights off the front of the building, eventually we had some downlights and, and we converted the lighting in that parking area to carriage lights, a series of carriage lights, similar to what people have at the end of their driveway. That's what we're going to be lighting in this area through here. The building that you see there is similar to the other buildings. It's basically the same height as a, uh, two-story All-American homes in that regard. It's made of full brick materials on all sides. Uh, we feel that the comments of the, uh, of the zoning commission and the staff report are things that we can work and incorporate into. We feel that we can work with staff to incorporate many of these. Some of the items that came up at the zoning commission hearing that we would like to do and I think some of these can actually go on to both cases. There was the comment that there's a, a lot of accidents out on Tabasco Road, Mount Carmel Tabasco and we have done a traffic study on that, had our consultant do a traffic study in which he found in a three-year period, a total of seven accidents on that road. And one of them was by an unlicensed driver and one was by a motorcycle ran into the back of a car and that, so this is the copy of the traffic report.
Thank you.
From our traffic consultants, indicating the accidents and those patients done that. I think that applies only to this, but to our major amendment case. The other thing that we had, as mentioned, was the cattails along Old Orchard. Well, I discussed this with Matt and he's aware of the cattails and there's some history involved with that and no need for me to go into that, but the cattails are not affected one way or the other, are not a result, one way or the other, of this development. They are upstream from this development, uh, the flow from there goes under a crossroad culvert and goes into our retention basin that we have on site. There's a comment, uh, about, you know, lights on the building. Well, like I said, we have changed the lights on the building to have it just to carriage lights. This is going to apply to another. And one of the things that, um, I, I found, and it's regret, regrettable, but, uh, when there are problems, people, if they would communicate with Prem, he can address these, give him the opportunity to address. There was the issue of the siltation at the end of the crossroad culvert out of, uh, under Mount Carmel Tabasco Road. Well, that siltation came from upstream of our project, but he went out and cleaned out the, the culvert in that regard. Uh, and there was a comment in which comes up more in the second case, of the lights on the existing building are shining in my kitchen window. Well, we have eliminated those lights, so we can eliminate that issue. Some of the other things that came up, um, was school-aged children, what this impact are we going to have? Well, we did a research on that also. The number of schoolchildren in the West Claremont School District in 2013 was 8,386 and 2023, 8,326. So it's a 60-student reduction in the population over that 10-year period. And that's not unusual because you have the aging of the community. You also have a tendency for downsizing sizes of families. I got this information from the West Claremont School District.
I'm just looking at their expenses.
And there was a question about water pressure in the area. Well, that is, uh, the water pressure in this area is affected by the fact that the Claremont County, the highest, one of the highest points of Claremont County is in this area. It's one of the few places in Claremont County that is close to or above elevation 900. The Claremont County, uh, serves this area with fire and water protection from the new, uh, water tank and fire station located at Conestly-Wistville and Clough Pike. When you set up a district, you set it up, everything in an elevation that can service the area. Now, the, what we have here is we have, and the, have enough water, that's a 2 million gallon tank that was built there at, at the corner of Clough and Conestly-Wistville. So there's enough water, the tank is, drains down somewhat during the day and is refilled at night during the off-period times. There is enough fire and there is enough residual pressure to handle fire and things like this. If we were to try to incorporate or increase a desirable, what people consider to be desirable water pressure, they'd have to redesign the whole system, had to put in additional water towers, tanks, and valving and that to make the isolated area different. And the chances of that occurring really aren't, but I don't think there's a need for it in that regard. Then we have here figures as to the existing development. The 83 apartments there have a total of 14 students. Now, not all of these students, uh, probably go to public school, but there are 14. Anyway, if, uh, we take our additional number of units, we would be contributing five additional students to the school district based upon the existing conditions. Prem has a waiting list for people, uh, to rent his apartments and he can attest to that. Uh, Prem, why don't you come up and talk?
Sir, I'm going to have to, I'll, I'll swear you in, that's okay. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so if you got it?
I do.
Great. And then please state your name and address for the record.
We have a continuous waiting list for our apartments.
Sir, can you state your name and address for the record?
Prem Damijah, 7025 Beach Hollow Drive, Cincinnati, Ohio 45236.
Thank you, thank you, go ahead, sorry.
So we have a continuous waiting list for our apartments and we just can't fulfill, fulfill the requirement because we don't have any vacancies anymore. So we just continue to postpone it whenever somebody calls to tell me if there's something comes, I will let you know.
Thank you. Like I stated, the building that we have here is similar to...
It's okay, it's okay, he's, he's, he's up. It's okay, we, we, we heard him, it's okay, it's okay, go ahead, go ahead. It's okay, folks, we, we, we heard him, it was okay.
I addressed the board, okay. Um, the building we have here is very similar to a two-story building, two stories, All-American two-story home. There's, uh, four, eight apartments per building and there's two separate entrances, so we have that as then and he's had a good history here. Uh, we have addressed the lights, we talked about the water pressure, we talked about the cattails, and we talked about the accidents. We really gave us what these comments from the zoning commission hearing gave us the opportunity to look into this in more detail and get some more additional information, which we've given to you tonight. I'm welcome to answer any questions and I maybe would like some time to respond to any of the comments from the public.
Sure, sure.
Thank you, thank you for that.
Do you, do you, do you have a question, Mr. Urban? Okay. Okay, and then at this time also, we'll continue with anyone else that is a proponent of this case, that is for this case. All right, perfect. And sir, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so if you got it?
I do.
And then please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Joseph Flamplott, I'm a resident, um, 4141 Mount Carmel Tabasco Road, apartment 7, and I'm a resident there and, um, I just want to let you know what, the difference between Belleville Apartments and the other apartments in the area. I was looking for an apartment for three months. Um, the last place I checked was, was, um, Arbers and I went there to look at a $900 apartment and they showed me a $2,500 apartment. They wanted all these fees, including a non-refundable deposit and to be put on the list. And, um, it was a really, really awful experience. On the way back, I saw the Belleville Apartments and I stopped in and the maintenance manager told me where Prem was and I said, uh, "Do you have an apartment available, um, anytime soon?" And he said, "September, middle of September." I said, "Would you happen to have a garage? Uh, you want this one?" Um, that's how it started. Um, it's the best apartment I've ever been in. These apartments, they're all the same pretty much and it's the best apartment I've ever been in and he's also the best landlord I've ever had. Every time you see him, he's got a smile on, on his face. This isn't a big corporate place, this is Prem and the community and, um, I have a real bad stage fight.
You're okay, you're okay, you're doing good, it's fine.
He likes all the little bits about running the place and he's really made a difference. It's a community, it's not, you know, just a big corporate. So the point is that this is not like everywhere else, they're all around here and I was at all of those places and, um, you know, they don't have, you don't have to buy cable and spend 150 and all that stuff. It's a really good place and Prem's a really good person and that's the kind of place you want in Union Township. So that's what I have to say, thank you.
That's great, thank you, sir, very much, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else that is a proponent, uh, that is for this case? Okay, seen none, I will move on. And is there anyone that is an opponent of this case, that is against this case? And one at a time, you're more welcome to come up. And then, uh, same thing, I'm going to have to swear you in, okay?
Yes, one second here.
Okay, you ready? Ma'am, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so if you got it?
I do.
All right, please state your name and address for the record.
Linda Wilson, 558 Old Orchard Drive. And, um, is that all you need or you need my...
Ma'am, you're good, you're good, you go ahead.
Okay, so, you can't really talk about one without talking about the other, okay? So if he, if you change that, it opens him up to building, which is behind my home, which is the next case that comes and...
Mr. McCormick, will you switch it to the aerial for me?
So, like, my family is...
Ma'am, are you talking, I just want to know from my rec, so are you talking about the one to the, the left of the yellow lines? Is that, is that your property?
Yes, I'm the third one over.
Okay, I got it, okay.
We're the oldest, uh, like, our, my family's been there since it was the, the house, okay? And the thing is, is that when it comes to him making promises about what he's going to do, he never does it, like as far as the lights. He changed them because he was asked to change them so that he could build his other building because you guys told him to or asked him to. I just read that in 2013 paper from, uh, sorry, from the, um, zoning commission. And when he, when he signed off on what the zoning commission had asked him, it included, it included the, um, I can put my glasses on, sorry, can't see anymore. It in, well, his, William Fiedler, who was his architect at the time, was the one who was okay with the wooded area, which is behind my home, and I know we're not talking about... was okay with the wooded area, which is behind my home, and I know we're not talking about that one, but just, I'm gonna bring it together here, that he said, his, his spokesman said that it would be labeled a green belt, no clear area, except for the area cleared by Duke, which, we got a huge tower going through there. So at the end of the day, you know, either, a man's word is his word, or it isn't. You know, I mean, when you come and you say, "Okay, this is the line we'll draw, and that if you let me build this over here, then we'll call it that." And here we are again, using the green belt area behind my home, and I don't know if any of you have really checked out the size of this, but I can see clearly through there and see Old Orchard condominiums behind me, who are really good neighbors. There's deer, I mean, it's pleasant, it, it keeps the sound out from the echoing of the, of the highway, that they put those cement fences on, it radiates that sound. So if, if you change that to R-two, it's gonna open up that he, it's not gonna be landlocked anymore, and he can go in there and do that. When they change that, where there is an emergency entrance on this particular one, on the one pertaining to the, the woods behind me, he's got a road going behind there and out to our street. It, I got it right here. So he's got a road coming to our street, out of there, and I'm telling you, that those apartments, although, the ones of that gentleman, I don't know where he went to, went, those are well-maintained, but those are nasty. If you look at them, they're not maintained, if you just go over there and look at them. The house that they're gonna tear down, he has it that way, 'cause some guy live in there with five dogs, four or five of them are female, there's one male, producing puppies, they're pooping on the front porch, and it stinks all the way to Terry's View Drive behind J.R.'s house. And the thing is, is that he did that so that everybody will say, "Oh, God, just tear that thing down, okay, we'll do it," because nobody wants to smell the dog crap. And I mean, there's cars, broken-down cars, it looks hillbilly. So there's always a method to his madness when it comes to this particular thing. He, he does this, you know? "Okay, so we know what we're gonna do, we're just gonna, we're gonna put, we're gonna put apartments behind your place, and then I'm gonna build this." "Okay, so we'll just switch off, if you let me build this, we won't do this." I mean, it has just happened over and over again. I just, I mean, the only thing that we have, really, is a quiet, peaceful, I'm sorry, my mouth just dropped, because I'm very nervous.
It's okay, it's okay.
I'm sorry. That affects me, it doesn't affect him. It's my home, and we've been there a long time, I got great, thank you, I have great neighbors, none like you all, great neighbors. I'm sorry. But it needs to nothing to him. But when you call it what you call it, then keep your word and keep it a green belt, because it is, it is effectively the highest level of protection from development. That's what a green belt is. And, you know, it's like, zoning keeps its word or it doesn't. Trustees, they agreed with zoning at the time when they said that, so the trustees, they kept their word. And I want you to keep your word and stop him, I mean, there's no room, I'm telling you. I could probably bathe with the person in the apartment behind me. And then if you look at this particular thing, I'm showing you, right through here is a huge Duke Energy Towers, so I don't even think he can put a, because we got the Duke guy coming now to tell us, it's just taking forever for him, that he would have to move it over that way. I mean, my, my property, I mean, look, I don't live in any hill, I don't live in some gr, but it's mine, it's paid for, okay? And if he puts those up there and makes them look like that, my property values are gonna go down. I mean, it's just...
Ma'am, can I ask you a question?
Sure.
It's your time to talk.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And, but, so, everyone that's an opponent, I would like you to think about this one same question as well, that I have, and, 'cause I do, we have to think of this as two separate cases.
I'm sorry.
So, no, no, don't be sorry. So, so, I hear your concern loud and clear with the property behind your house, and you're the third one over, so my question is, and I want everyone that's, that's an opponent to address this if you would, but it's your time to talk. So that yellow shaded area over there, right there, so it's three, I'm gonna say, three yards...
Yes, yes.
You know, from your property, does that, how does that affect you? Would it affect you? And, and I can't talk right now, me personally, about the property that's behind you, because I have to vote on those separately.
Correct.
So I hope you can understand my question. So the question, I can only focus on is the yellow, and what are your thoughts? Does that affect your property? Tell me what you think.
I do think it'd affect all of our properties, because the way... I mean, the other one, the other apartment, I forget what they call it, it's maintained nicely. This one, if you go over there, it looks like it has not been maintained at all, it looks trashy. And there's some trash right above, and where Tabasco is, right in front of that one, there's trash through there, the lawn is not, never looks good, but I'm just saying that you can, my property values would be better if there's a residential home built there. Period. You know, I mean, all you gotta do is go look at it, you know? And the only time he changes and fixes things, I mean, the last few years before he decided to start this, those lights in the winter, because there were no leaves, and, I mean, all the way to my house, which is the third one up, I mean, that's how bright they were, it was like a mothership. And when I read this, he did not comply, he did not comply to the lighting when he said he would when he built the other ones. I mean...
Thank you, you did a good job. You did a great job, thank you. Okay, and is there anyone else that'd like to speak against this, as an opponent against this case? I'll, I'll get you next, sir, I'll get you next, yeah, please, go ahead. Let me swear you in. Sir, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so hope you got it?
I do.
Great, please state your name and address for the record.
Ed Bridgeman, four-sixty-three Cortland Place, four-five-two-five-five.
Okay, thank you, Ed.
You. Ma'am, gentlemen, by your leave, I'll use my notes here.
Please, please.
My, my students used to tell me that my notes were not to tell me what to say, but when to stop, so, I would like to, while I'm mostly concerned with the section that's encroaching on our, our property on Cortland Place, I'd like to address both of them together in this respect, and, and let me tell you a little bit about my, why I'm so pretentious to address them in this way. I have twenty-five years in law enforcement, over half of it in administration, and then another twenty-five years as the head of the Criminal Justice Technology Program at the University of Cincinnati, and a professor of criminal justice there. So, I, I'm speaking about the, the issue of overpopulation density, that I believe. I moved into Claremont County in nineteen seventy with my family, out of Hamilton County, to get away from population density, and moved into a, a quiet area that had the green space around it. When, when you confront the issue of overpopulation density, you have to look at it on, on two different levels. The first is experiential, and I have an experiential basis on dealing with dense populations in my career in law enforcement, where I had to develop policies to deal with the impact issues out of this, and I was also in frontline confrontation of these issues over a good deal of my career. But I have since had a, both a professional and scholarly approach to this, the issues of over-density in, in populations. I'm a graduate of the FBI's National Academy, the Justice Department's National Executive Institute, I have a master's degree in public administration, and a great deal of PhD work in social sciences and political sciences. So I've looked at this from a scholarly standpoint, studied the best practices. I've been in places around, not just the nation, but the world, and observed the impact of overpopulation density, real-world conditions, real-world results out of this. The realities of population overpopulation density are on two levels. They're on the concrete level, where we have, a lot of the issues have been mentioned here, vehicle flow, and the number of accidents on Mount Carmel Tabasco Road is, I think, by the grace of God, and not the fact that there are no traffic accidents on Mount Carmel Tabasco Road. But also, what do you do with those vehicles in the evening? Where are they? Where do they, where are they stored? Power grid implications of this. We don't have a great deal of power outages in the area, but we do have them. The increase of the density would increase the strain on the power grid. Water delivery systems, not just for emergencies, but there are times when you turn the faucet on and it's not always the top flow. But above that are water waste disposal that has to go into this. I have seen the water on Mount Carmel Tabasco Road three, four inches deep when it really rains. And the second issue is quality of light, just ambient noise, ambient noise. When you increase the density, you increase the ambient noise. There's also the increase of social friction, with all kinds of studies about when you have more people, there's, there's more problems. Scott, I'm sorry, Lieutenant Blankenship, can tell you all about that, and not just from when he got it in my class. And then inevitably, inevitably, as you increase population over-density, you increase not just the potential, but the actuality of crime. So from my professional and personal, experiential and scholarly standpoint, when I've studied this whole plan, that was, as it was presented, I, I can't help but strongly oppose it. I thank you very much for your time and attention.
Thank you, sir, thank you very much, thank you. Sir, I did call on you next, you go ahead. Say anything, I'm going to swear you in. Sir, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so hope you got it?
I do.
Sir, please, and go ahead, state your name and address for the record.
My name is John Becker. I'm the John Becker that gets all the grief from this gentleman here.
Do you get all his hate mail?
As I gave you the hate mail letter the other night.
I was just looking at your property on the overhead. I was looking at it too. By golly, there's a John Becker here. I literally was looking at the exact same thing, I saw that, yeah.
Forty-one, twenty-two Mount Carmel Tabasco Road. My house was the one with the big concrete runway. I built it four years ago, my wife Sherri and I. The problem I have with his study on accidents, I've lived there four years, I've had seven or eight accidents per year in front of my house. And the reason is, is because people try and turn in Old Orchard. They come around that bend right there on Tabasco, and they can't stop quick enough, so they plow into one another. They come through my yard, I've had four or five mailboxes that I've replaced myself, two or three that other people have replaced, which I appreciate. My biggest problem is with his study on me, accidents, that is way off. I can tell union townships in my driveway maybe four or five times a year since I've lived there. My other problem is, is the water pressure. When I built my house, I got an occupancy permit, I couldn't take a shower. I did not have the water pressure to take a shower. I have a sprinkler system in my yard, it wouldn't even pop up to heads. I understand they did a test on the fire hydrant, they say the pressure's fine. What people don't realize, I've been in construction for forty years, you got a six-inch main going into a fire hydrant, you got a two-inch main going into a house. Claremont County came out to my house, I had twenty-three pounds of pressure, way under the limit. I said, "What do I do?" They said, "Figure it out." I said, "Can I put a pump in?" We advised not to. I put a pump in, that's the only way I could take a shower in my house. Since then, I've talked to the plumbers that did the new firehouse up here on the corner, and they told me they put a pump in that for the firemen to take a shower there. My problem is, if we keep building all these places, I'm at the end of the line on the water, they told me that. So we've got the newer places going in on Clough Pike here, Twelve Oaks or whatever it is, we're gonna add more apartments, so what's that gonna do to the water for everybody else? I know when I built, J.R. and Patty Philpott said their water pressure went down. A few of the other neighbors told me their water pressure went down. So if mine didn't meet what Claremont County said, then what's it gonna do now with these new apartments going in? And one other thing, I just got my tax bill from Claremont County. I have a nice house, as you can see, but I pay fourteen thousand dollars a year for taxes, which I think is ridiculous. Ninety-eight-hundred goes to the school board, I have no kids in the school no more, I support schools, my daughter's a teacher. But if you're gonna keep doing this, when are they gonna fix the infrastructure to let all this building come in? Because you got sewers need replaced, water lines need replaced, and the roads need replaced. Now, you're, you look at Old Orchard, I think you said it was eighteen-foot wide?
Approximately.
When you go down that street, you gotta pull over to let somebody else come through.
Absolutely.
So, it's right across from my house, I see everything, so, that's all I've got to say.
Mr. Becker, thank you, and then, just so you know, I don't hide this fact, that I'm, my first term, which is four years, which will be up in two and a half years, I'm flat-out against, and I will be of no endorsement on any school levy, fire levy, police levy, any kind of tax levy at all in my first four years.
I appreciate that.
So, just so, we did not have anything to do with your auditor bill, I'm sorry.
I understand that.
I just want you to know, so, and so, but...
I would like to thank Mr. Becker, he did come to our house and ask our concerns on a Sunday. I do appreciate that.
Did you have a stack of hate mail for him that gets delivered to your house on accident?
Actually, I just gave it to him tonight.
Oh, you really did? And also noted. Yeah. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak against this case? Yes, ma'am, please, go ahead.
I'm just gonna be just fast with you.
No, it's okay, I gotta swear you in still.
Okay, sorry.
Ma'am, do you swear to tell, swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so hope you got it?
I do.
All right, ma'am, please state your name and address, please.
My name is Brenda Vega, I live at fifty-four Apple Lane, Cincinnati, four-five-two-five-five. Actually, I live at the very end of Old Orchard, in the Apple Valley condominiums. And there's so much chaos with all of the children and people trying to get in and out of the property, off the street, total, always accidents. We've had a lot of narcotic dealers back in our place, I ran a couple of those out, because I won't put up with that, I've been there twelve years. And Linda, she's, all these people that live on Orchard, Old Orchard are wonderful people. And Linda, she's, all these people that live on Orchard, Old Orchard are wonderful people. It's a wonderful little, it used to be probably a very beautiful place. There was actually a farm that was an orchard and there were fruit trees everywhere. It was beautiful. Now, they want to just put more buildings, more people. There's no way to get in and out. I practically get hit every day. I try to get in and out to go feed the swans, which I need to get out of here and go do right now. But anyways, it's just, I'm against this and I didn't even know that this was an issue. I just came in to see Pat get sworn in and I'm a little overwhelmed by all this and I just hope y'all take into consideration, you know, the, how you want to live your lives and your own neighborhoods and how you feel about, you know, not having any privacy, you know, happen to wear earplugs at night because you hear the freeway noise. Can't open your windows because the dust that comes off the freeway is in your house. You know, more people in this small space is going to create more chaos and the potential rises greatly for more crime, et cetera, and that we don't need that. So please reconsider this, gentlemen. I have to go. Thank you very much for letting me speak. I'm going to go take care of the swans.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, please. Ms. Philpott? Ma'am, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so hope you got it?
I do.
Please, state your name and address for the record.
Patty Philpott. I am forty-one thirty, forty-one thirty, Mount Carmel Tabasco Road, and we own the property of the daycare that is not functioning right now at forty-one thirty-two Mount Carmel Tabasco Road. A couple of things. The, John mentioned our water pressure, so I'm going to agree with that. So yesterday, I took my eight-year-old grandson over to McGuffey Lakes at a friend's house and he was thirsty. She gave him a cup. He went to the refrigerator, got some water, and he's like, man, that's fast. Filled up his cup like that. And I said, well, honey, let me tell you, our water pressure is a lot lower because when you go to my refrigerator, it does not. So, you know, we can't take showers, you know, I don't have a large family, so, you know, it's doable. If it gets any worse, you know, it's just more complaining for you guys, you know, whatever. My main concern also is the drainage that the gentleman referred to, that he cleaned out the silt. Across from the daycare, we have that water that comes through. It comes in our backyard and then comes through the two properties and goes next to the apartments that are already there. That, if you build more water and you have more runoff, because everybody knows that the ground is going to absorb more water than concrete. So when you have more runoff and you have more water going in there, he's going to get positioned in the drain before I will. It's going to back up in my building plus my yard. My yard, you know, we don't use it, it's, you know, whatever. But the building, it is trying to be a productive business. When you look at the building, it's on a low spot. It was built in nineteen seventy. There was a pond back there and I'm looking at it going, I don't know why, but you're the lowest. So I really need that area across the street, that's my dump point, to be well-maintained or redirected. You know, I don't want to make it worse for Old Orchard Condominiums or Home Depot or even the Arbers because it's going to go somewhere and it's going to go to the path of least resistance. So please take that into consideration. I don't want to complain to have something done, that takes months. I need the water to be removed as soon as possible at the time of the dump. Because we do, we have been getting a lot more torrential rains in our area. I don't know why, but it is. And I do notice that the wind, when he put those apartments in, there was a lot of wind that would come through and that those trees were a barrier. Now that the building's there, my apartment, my house is going to take more of a hit because that's where the storms come from. That is the direction of the storms. And I was very sad to see the green space go. I would like to see more green space stay. I know it's business. I know you guys got to do what you got to do, but that's my opinion. Thanks.
Thank you, ma'am. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak that is against this zoning case? Well, ma'am, you can, you could, this is your time to talk, but right now, we're only voting on that yellow shaded area and that is it. That's the only thing I can, I can think about in my mind. Try to at least.
Does that come across from Corwin?
No. No, ma'am.
No.
Yes, ma'am. Right after this case, it will be, will be the other one. Correct. Is there anyone else that'd like to speak that is against this case? Okay. Seeing none? And then, Mr. Hartman, I did give you the opportunity to rebuttal and I'm okay with that?
All right, thank you so much.
I've already sworn in, so you go ahead.
Repeat?
I've already sworn in, so you go ahead.
Yes, you have.
Yes, sir, go ahead.
After our zoning commission meeting, I met with Mr. Philpott out of the site and he alluded to the fact that the siltation upstream of ours caused a problem at the outlet of our pipe, the pipe under Mount Carmel Tabasco Road. Like I said, Prem addressed that. If we look at the staff report, the finding is a fact. The subject property is located within the Mount Carmel Tabasco Road mixed-use corridor, which indicates that the area should be a blend of housing and commercial diversity. Areas of focus of this corridor, when considering zoning changes, include access control, aesthetic enhancements, and commercial residential buffering. I think our site plan has done that. I think we have provided those criteria and if not, if we need additional, we're willing to work with the township trustees or with Mark to accomplishing that. Ms. Wilson's comments, I planned on addressing as part of my second half presentation as far as the major amendment. So I'll withhold commenting on that until that part of the hearing. But again, you know, it's, we think that the corridor here, this corridor is very much a mixed use. Even from Clough Pike all the way to one-twenty-five, you have a mix of church, you have a mix of multifamily, and you have commercial and that. Philpott's business over there too is part of that in that corridor. And so, you know, you have all sorts of mixed use there. The traffic on Mount Carmel Tabasco Road is not light, but it's not overly heavy either. When you look at the volume of traffic...
It's okay. Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Folks, 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 hold on, hold on. If you want to speak, I'll let you speak, but let Mr. Hartman have his time.
Compared to Clough Pike in itself, it's less, considerably less than Clough Pike. And knowing these numbers and having worked with these numbers, I can attest to that. So thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Hartman. You sure can, Mr. Becker. Go ahead. Wait, wait, you can completely come to the mic, please, so we can get you on record. And then, same thing, I've already sworn in, so you can go ahead and talk.
Since the construction of Eight Mile Road is closed down, I used to be able to get on my driveway just fine, but now traffic has backed up. Semis are on there, dump trucks are on there. Traffic has probably increased, I'd say fifty to seventy-five percent.
Thank you, Mr. Becker.
That's all I'd say. Thanks.
Okay. Is there, is there anyone else that'd like to speak on this case? Specifically with just that yellow area that's up there? Seeing none? All right, I'm going to go ahead and close public comments. Okay, and gentlemen, I'll open up for the board. Mr. Becker, did you have any comments at all?
Yeah. So I drove down there, I met with a number of the residents on both sides of the street, both sides along Orchard Lane and now on Mount Carmel Tabasco. So, you know, it's always good to see it, see the situation up close. And also drove around Belleville apartment complex, just drove through the parking lot, just kind of, just kind of checking things out, just to, you know, see what I can observe. So, you know, these zoning cases can always be difficult for various reasons and there are certainly pros and cons. And each of these, of course, we will consider on a case-by-case basis and everyone's different. So, you know, I'm hearing opposition in terms of density, traffic, public safety issues, and depending on who you ask in this room, is Belleville well-managed or is it not well-managed? There's a difference of opinion here. But what is always potential for the future is ownership and management can change. We've seen that in Union Township with other apartment complexes where then they tend to go downhill when you get some undesirables that move in. It does happen. I hope that never happens in Belleville, but potential's certainly always there. You know, the issue, of course, with the proximity of the single-family homes, we've heard significant public opposition, you know, and I'm not going to itemize, you know, what all that opposition was. Anybody can play back the tapes and catch all that. And then a question comes down to, on balance, is this good or bad for the community based on what we've heard today and considering the ruling that came from the zoning commission? So based on all of that, I am strongly leaning against approving this.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. Mr. Logue?
I'm open to hear your perspectives.
Do you have anything to say?
I'm most open to hear your perspectives right now. I hear what Mr. Becker has to say. Wrote down a couple of notes here on the water pressure, accidents, taxes, which is not to do with the zoning case. It's something different. I think it's important to look at the difference between the two cases. I know we heard a lot today about the two cases in total from opponents. Save those comments for the next case. I know behind Linda Wilson's house, I measured that, that's a hundred and twenty-five feet between her property line and the apartment complex property line behind her, so that is very narrow going through there where that's wooded, but that is for the next zoning case. So I'm open to, open to hear your perspectives, Mr. Dills.
First off, Mr. Prem, I do appreciate you investing in Union Township. It takes risk, it takes money, capital, and you've got to run a successful business and you want to profit and do well. And I do, I do very much appreciate that, you investing in our township. And I do agree with what Mr. Becker said, that ownership does change and it can be for better or the worse. So I would argue there are some hotels that were not the same that they used to be and they've changed hands and in my opinion, there's some that are not for the better, they're for the worse. However, right next door, I think Arbers got bought out not too long ago and I think they've flipped for the positive, at least tried to. It's a big investment, but they've done well with their ownership change as far as upgrading. So it could be positive or negative when ownership changes. You know, and I'll say this, I think I'm looking at the map and I'm trying, you know, we want, we do want investments, we do. And it helps because, you know, if this apartment building goes up, the value of it goes up, they have to pay more property taxes, which means more money for our police and fire, which means less likely to have to ever pass a new or additional police and fire levy. So there is, there's positives. Negatives are, a new apartment building goes up and all of you folks that are against it don't like that. So there's, there is pros and cons to investment, I get it. But I'll say, this is, I'm looking at it and just trying my best to just be as unbiased as possible and put myself in everyone's shoes here. You know, I, I made, I made a promise and, and, you know, we have to try our best to pump the brakes on multifamily and preserve our green space. So that's, that's kind of where I'm at. And, and so, you know, I don't want this to turn into Norwood or downtown, or Cincinnati or Hamilton County. I want this to stay Claremont as best as we can. I haven't made up my mind a hundred percent yet, but I will in just a moment. So, Mr. Logue, anything else or is that it?
You've been paying on me for one aspect when you reference the property tax and the revenues that come in. It's one of those things where, yeah, that may increase and even if we're just philosophically speaking, but the one building, but the cost of service is the, is the issue that we continue to see that drains when we do high-density residential in the township and the balance there, you know, because there's a lot of people that are, like you're saying, you're, I'm all for not having any more tax levies, keeping taxes low. That's why I wrote this down as a point, even though it's not to the zoning case specifically, but it's, Mr. Becker referenced ninety-eight hundred dollars, that fourteen thousand dollars goes to the schools. We get even way less than that to the township to try to run and provide essential services, police, fire, the parks that you're hearing. And, you know, it's, to me, it's a flawed logic to, to try to make it up with more and more and more and more dense residential development because the cost of services, we continue to see it, fifty-five thousand calls for service a year right now on the police side, you know, anywhere between nine to twelve thousand on fire side. And that's just, that's what weighs on me. Again, as far as what you consider with this addition, this actual case, I hear you, Mr. Dills and Mr. Becker, as far as, it sounds like the way in which you lean there. And I can definitely see your perspective. Those are the items I take into consideration as well.
Okay. Did I open it for motion, correct? Or no? No? Okay. So, gentlemen, I'm just going to read off the zoning case. Is that okay, Ms. Harris? If I just read off the zoning case number or do I got to read the whole item again?
You can read off the zoning case number and then we'll give a motion to approve or disapprove.
Okay. Gentlemen, I want to attend a motion for Union Township zoning case four dash two-three dash Zulu.
Do you want the motion to approve or to deny?
What motion do you want to make, Mr. Becker?
If you want me to make the motion, I will move to deny the zoning change.
There's a second. I'll second. Ms. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. Moving on to, that was kind of opposite. So, Mr. Campbell, would you mind explaining what that was?
So the motion was to deny the zoning as presented. We had a second on it and then I did the roll call and all three trustees voted to deny the application as presented, so...
The residents got their way.
And I'm going to open up our second zoning case and then, Mr. McCormick, I will not forget about you this time. It's Union Township zoning case three dash one-three dash zero, a request for major amendment to a current plan development filed by applicant Prem Damagia for the six-point-nine-three-three acre property located parcel number four-one-three-two-one-four, E as in Echo, zero-four-eight, P as in Paul, property located at four-one-two-seven-three-one, four-one-three-seven, Mount Carmel Tabasco Road and Old Orchard Lane. Mr. McCormick, please take over.
Yes. So the, there are two portions to this case, there were two portions to this case. One was a major amendment involving the original six-point-nine-three-three acre property and the other component is now no longer something that needs to be discussed, which was amendment that had the previous case been approved or rezoned, was up for discussion as part of another portion of that amendment. So we will skip that part of the report when we come to that. And those parcels are no longer applicable. So the only parcel that's applicable with this request now is the one that you mentioned. Subject site is the larger property that's highlighted here and it's at forty-one thirty-seven Mount Carmel Tabasco Road, which is on the western side of Mount Carmel, I'm sorry, which is on the western side of the road in southwestern quadrant of the township. Zoning of the property is zone plan development in terms of the six-point-nine acre area. The twenty-thirty plan, the conference of plan indicates the proposal is located within the Mount Carmel Tabasco mixed-use corridor. Mentioned what the corridor involved previously in the last case, so I'm not going to go over all that again. Mentioned that it's a county-maintained road as far as Mount Carmel Tabasco, two-lane roadway, ten thousand two hundred trips a day, with significant residential populations located in or near this area. The lack of sidewalks results in a safety issue for those seeking alternative modes of transportation. I did mention what the plan calls for in this area besides sidewalks, which includes site development to be conducted in a manner that maximizes land use efficiency with infill development, adequate vegetative buffering and landscaping strategies along shared property lines and landscaping enhancements along corridor frontage being required. A little background about the six-point-nine-three-three acre property. In June, almost to the day, ten years ago of two thousand thirteen, the trustees, I believe it was, yes, the trustees, or I'm sorry, the planning, zoning commission met and the trustees met in July of two thousand thirteen with respect to this property. And at that time, the three-point-two-six-three acre property to the north already contained five buildings that had thirty-four multifamily residential units. The plan for the six-point-nine-three-three acre property at that time was for six buildings of eight units totaling forty-eight multifamily units and allowed for shared detention in a significant buffer area of approximately two-point-four-seven acres after the public hearing took place and some concessions were made regarding... hearing took place and some concessions were made regarding the development plan. Minor amendment was permitted in two thousand thirteen with respect to the final configuration of the forty-eight units as a result of requirements added by the Army Corps of Engineers and the status of a stream traversing the development. And a second minor amendment was approved in two thousand seventeen to allow a new manager's office, apartment and community room structure on the property. Major amendment, uh, sections here of the zoning resolution reference section six-eighty, six-eighty-two, six-eighty-four and six-eighty-five. Again, for property that's zoned with an approved PD plan, the plan shall remain forever in effect and the plan, along with these regulations, shall govern the use of the property subject to any future amendments or rezoning. If not complete within five years, the plan expires. Uh, the parts of the property remains zoned PD. No development shall occur otherwise until the new plan is approved for that part of the property or the property is otherwise rezoned. And six-eighty-six, board trustees shall consider the amendment adopted motion to approve, deny or modify the amended plan. Prior to entering into final decision, the board trustees may direct further data be provided if necessary to make an informed decision and the board should make appropriate findings of fact as part of the decision-making process. So again, here is the subject site, which is now just focused on the larger, uh, outlined area in yellow. And we are looking only at proposed amendment area now one in this particular slide. And that, and what's highlighted in this particular property on the oblique. A review of the applicant's proposal indicates the proposed uses are consistent with the uses that already exist on the subject property and adjoining velvied apartment community to the north. However, the proposed density is higher. The existing residential density of the six-point-nine-three-three acre property is approximately seven-point-one units per acre. And with the addition of the three buildings of eight units, the overall density would increase to ten-point-five-three units per acre. Uh, it's notable that the location of the three proposed buildings on the six-point-nine-three-three acre tract is within a significant buffer area that was part of the previous development plan recommended by staff and approved by the township in two thousand thirteen as, quote, "a no-clearing zone to be preserved in perpetuity," quote. Although the applicant has attempted to add landscaping and buffering to adhere to the PD requirements set forth in Article Six, Section six-eighty-four-three, item three of the zoning resolution, it appears that the proposed building and parking layout make it impossible to fully achieve the township requirements along the northwest area of proposed new development. The fact that the subject property becomes narrower and more linear for much of the proposed new viable area is also a factor in the configuration of the site and the proposed improvements. Proposed landscaping and buffering, um, the last statement doesn't apply, so I won't skip that. Uh, the architectural standards of the new buildings follow the blueprint of the two-story brick units that have been established elsewhere on the site, including the size of each individual uni- unit. Lighting is indicated to be downward directed and is intended to match the lighting of the other existing buildings. Proposed parking appears to be adequate in terms of the number of spaces needed to serve the additional units. The proposed stormwater system has been designed to tie into the existing detention basin, which would be enlarged in this plan. Amendment is approved. Action required, in accordance with section six-eighty to six-eighty-seven, already went over that. And you're only looking at the one action for the establishment of three buildings totaling twenty-four multifamily dwelling units on the six-point-nine-three-three acre tract. I'll go over the recommended modifications here in a moment. So here are the pictures of the site. This is looking along Mount Carmel Tabasco Road to the northwest at the entrance. This is looking southeast along Mount Carmel Tabasco Road. This is looking across the street, looking east towards Waterberry Apartments. This is looking at the existing site development from the access on Mount Carmel Tabasco Road from southwest to northwest, left to right. Uh, this is looking at the existing site development, looking from left to right, northwest to north. You can see Mount Carmel Tabasco Road there on the right. Uh, this is looking northwest towards existing housing. This is looking southeast from the existing housing towards Mount Carmel Tabasco Road. Uh, this is looking northeast towards existing housing towards the, uh, west end of the site. This is looking from west northwest towards the proposed expansion detention area. Couldn't get a picture of the actual expansion area because it looked like it's pretty heavily wooded and, um, but that's what most of it looks like from what I can see. These pictures are the other area that's taken out of the request. Recommended modifications that remain need to address any concerns from related other agencies and departments. The applicant, uh, should relocate the proposed six-foot privacy fence that is situated between the proposed buildings and the areas to remain undisturbed, set to preserve vegetation between the proposed fence on the subject property and the adjacent single-family residential areas to the south. Lighting plan must be provided and a new survey, uh, would have been needed if we would have been, uh, including the additional acreage from the rezone, but that's no longer applicable on that particular item. Um, as I mentioned earlier, we did receive a letter from the attorney, an attorney representing the Old Orchard Unit Owners Association, um, referenced the wrong cases and sometimes the wrong property address, uh, but in here, they're asking for the installation of a six-foot shadow box style privacy fence along the property boundary between the site and Old Orchard, um, asking that the applicant be required to install a six-foot green giant arbor by day at ten-foot intervals along the property value between the site and Old Orchard. And in some cases, the intervals may be less than ten feet on what the applicant's proposed and I believe the vegetation is similar. I don't know if it's exactly the same. Uh, in the letter we received today, this afternoon, also asking for landscaping buffer with mounting techniques to be installed, but I, that one may have been in reference to the previous case because I don't think the attorney knew there were differences in the two cases. The association requests that the applicant be made to use a more brownish color of brick as opposed to the yellow color that the applicant is using in the already existing buildings on the site. There's a concern that the, they don't exceed the twenty, more than twenty percent of the site, there'd, there'd be less than twenty percent of the site be dedicated for open space. And the association requests the applicant be required to install lighting for the illumination of both proposed multifamily buildings and parking areas that is pointed downward and towards the parking areas installed so as not to disturb or be a nuisance to the condominium owners. And the association expects the applicant will be made to comply with all stormwater runoff and drainage installation requirements so as to avoid any excessive stormwater or drainage runoff that may pose a flood risk to the Old Orchard. So we received this this afternoon, about two or three o'clock, and then subsequently called the attorney, um, probably the last hour or so of the day and talked to him and tried to clarify what was in here.
Any questions for me? Mr. Becker, Mr. Logue, questions? Good? No, thank you, Mr. McCormick. Thank you, Mr. McCormick. Good. Okay. At this time, I will open up our case, zoning case, uh, three dash one-three dash Z as in Zulu, for anyone that is a proponent that is for this case. Anyone willing to speak? Uh, it's two separate cases, so I gotta swear in, okay?
Where are we at, Eddie?
I do, I do. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, not the above the truth, so help you God?
So help me God, I do.
Thank you, Mr. Hartman, and then state your name and address, sir.
Carl Hartman, thirty-four seventy-eight Holiday Ridge Drive, Cincinnati, Ohio, four-five-two-four-five.
All right, thank you, hon.
A few years back, Union Township did a study on apartments and the density. They would, uh, try, as I understand, one of the things they were concerned about was the viability of the existing East Gate business community and the business community of one-twenty-five and the business community in general. This, uh, study, I believe, was the genesis for the township putting apartments, more apartments on Glen Estee Whistledale Road up behind East Gate, uh, area, up there, near the old high school. And that, there's been quite a additional, number of additional apartments added in that area. And so I think we're very similar to that in this area here. That's that report that was done in the township, um, probably ten, fifteen years ago, I think still applies. If we looked at the viability of our commercial and our retail sales in, in Union Township, that's what is very important, not only Union Township, but also to the county. The sales tax generated by this commercial development produces quite a bit of monies and I think some of it comes directly to the township. Yes, it does, okay. Uh, a certain percentage of the sales tax comes directly to the township. Is that right, Ron?
We got a portion of it.
Okay, that's what I thought.
Through the county, I don't mean to mislead you. It filters back through the county to us.
I don't know the numbers, but I, I was always on the periphery of this numbers and, and heard from what I come from. I opened up my other one talking about changes that have occurred in Union Township since nineteen fifty-nine, where we had a twenty-page zoning resolution to the current two-hundred-and-two-page zoning resolution. Uh, let's look at the, uh, buffer area that Ms. Wilson is considered beside, behind her building. It's basically a lot of honeysuckle in that regard. Well, we are owned a piece of property over on Mount Carmel on that, I'm sorry, Mount Mariah Drive, just west of the church. And one day I found, uh, where the homeless had been living in that honeysuckle. I got alerted, I called the police. The police told me that, well, put a note out there, they'll probably move on. And they did. But at the same time, we had single women living there. And when they found out that they had homeless people living outside their units, they were concerned and I think rightfully so. Prem has had comments from our property neighbors to the north that they have observed people using the honeysuckle as this preserved area, this reserved area, as, uh, sleeping quarters. And talking with the police at that time, he estimated that there's at least a hundred people, homeless people roaming the area of Union Township. I can only imagine that number's gone up since in the last five or six years. And that, so therefore, uh, this property, there's a sewer line that goes through that property, I think was originally intended, Prem bought this property when it was originally intended to be condominiums, correct? And so the sewer line that comes through here and transfers to that was intended to serve that as condominiums at a later date. So now we're looking at putting apartments in, probably about the same number that we would have had if we had condominiums there when the property was originally, when the sewer line and the infrastructure was put in years ago. And that, so therefore, you know, um, I just, I think the comments that I had earlier about the traffic, about the accidents, one accident every five months, uh, and ten thousand cars a day, that's not, that's not a high accident rate. The, uh, the water issue, I don't think that, uh, I don't think I could convince anybody that you, it's a matter of the elevation of the area compared to the elevation of our water storage tower. There's two million gallons of water stored over, uh, top of the firehouse over there. And that's enough to handle any of the needs and through here for both, not only, uh, domestic use, but also for fire in that area. The, uh, lights on the building, we, uh, turned off the lights on the back of that one building when, uh, we became aware that they were doing this. On these three buildings that we got over in that area, we have no lights on the back of the building. Our lights are in the front of the building to the parking areas and that. So therefore, the downlights, they would be directed downward anyway. We would be providing a photometric plan that would comply with the foot candle requirements of the zoning resolution. That's, that could be achieved, that could easily be achieved, I can assure you of that. The, um, you know, like I said, you know, I met with Mr. Phil Pop between, after the zoning hearing and I thought I addressed his concerns in that regard. Uh, so, you know, the, um, the zoning has changed since nineteen fifty-nine. From two thousand thirteen, the use of this open space behind there has changed from open space to somewhat of a, a living quarters for, uh, the homeless.
Hold on, guys, hold on, hold on, hold on.
Well, I can only relate that Prem has received complaints from the property owners to the north that they have observed this type of, yeah? Please?
Folks, folks, come on, folks. Thank you.
I didn't interrupt you, don't interrupt me. And so therefore, that's basically my presentation. I think that the plan that we have, it's, uh, it complies with your twenty-thirty land use designations and I think that the conditions have changed that would warrant twenty-four more units back in that area.
Thank you, Mr. Hartman.
Thank you, Mr. Hartman.
Mr. Hartman? Mr. Hartman? Mr. Hartman? Mr. Hartman? It's okay. Here, Mr. Becker has a couple of questions for you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Hartman, first off, I want you to know you, you do good work, in my opinion, and, and I, I really do like you. I know we see, we don't see eye to eye on everything, but I really do admire and respect you, I just want you to know that.
Well, thank you. You know, if, if you and I agree on everything, it would be a sad world.
Yeah. But my, my question is, so I'm looking at a staff review of, of this, um, particular plot from, uh, twenty thirteen and, and the quote is here, there will be no clearing, this will be, this area will be a no-clearing zone to be preserved perpetuity.
Yes.
So, uh, sounds to me like that means what it says, what, how, how should we read that differently than what it says?
Well, we contend that the use of that property in twenty thirteen and the use of that property in twenty twenty-three is not the same. And so therefore, the conditions have changed. Conditions have changed which warrant modifications to your zoning resolution, increased number of things, a day's paragraph, you know, we addressed, uh, the strip clubs and that sort of thing, got into the zoning resolutions and that. And so I, we think that the conditions have changed to two thousand thirteen that warrant the, the additional, uh, twenty-four units.
Okay, thank you. Hey, and then, thank you, Mr. Hartman. Mr. Logue, do you have anything for?
Honestly, just to second what Mr. Becker said as far as Mr. Hartman, anytime you present a case and bring a case.
My hearing aids batteries way dead.
Anytime you present a case and, and come before the board, I know you've got your Ts, you know, crossed and your Is dotted and you are, uh, you know, the epitome of the professional to be able to bring cases forward and I think you're, you're absolutely one of the absolute fastest coming here.
Well, thank you for the top of it, I owe you.
No, no, that.
I do enjoy my profession.
Yeah.
And I really truly think I do a good job of it.
Absolutely, and we can, we can tell and, and it's, it's always, it's always benefit.
I try to be real professional in my presentations.
It's always benefit to hear, hear from you and see you here, so thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hartman. Thank you, thank you. Uh, and then, folks, I'm just gonna ask, so, uh, I, I know this is an emotional delicate situation, this is your property, this is land, it's a permanent vote, um, but with all due respect, Mr. Far, Fam and, and, and Mr. Hartman have been extremely respectful. So either if he says a comment you absolutely disagree with, it's okay, just wait and I promise you I'll give you your time to speak. But, uh, I don't wanna call a point of order, I really don't wanna do that. So, so let's, let's continue moving on. Is there anyone else that is a proponent that is for this case that would like to talk? Okay, seeing none, let's go with our opponents. Is there anyone that would like to speak tonight? Yes, ma'am, please, go ahead.
Sorry, I do have to go first, I work a full shift.
All right, ma'am, I gotta swear in. Okay, it's okay, the difference, the difference of the case. You swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, not the above the truth, so help you God?
I do.
All right, ma'am, please state your name and address, where you're from?
Linda Wilson, five-five-eight Old Orchard Drive.
All right, thank you.
Uh, Cincinnati, Ohio, four-five-two-five-five. And there, I remember specific, I mean, it's been a long time ago, we thought somebody was back there, but it was, um, two houses down, Mrs. Hubbard's grandson, who was doing a video, it was like a horror video, he actually used my back shed back there. But now, the lady back there who owns the house now, she has a Doberman Pinscher, we have a Kane Corso, there are no homeless people back there. Yes, there are honeysuckle, but there are trees probably older than me back there. And when he's talking about, you know, back in fifty-nine, back in fifty-nine, Wolfert's own that and that's when they had an apple orchard, peach orchard back there, when I was growing up. So, um, I'm just stating that this gentleman, Mr. Logue?
Logue.
Logue?
Logue, yes, ma'am.
He measured, and you can, you can see that there is just no room, none at all. I mean, there'd be nothing. They'd be looking in my house, the people in there. There's hardly any room to move there with the, um, he had, he had a road coming out on our street in which the zoning before stopped them from coming in and out our street unless it's an emergency vehicle. So, you know, I, I prefer you just change it to an R-two again, so he can't build on it. I mean, there's, it, it is a buffer between mine and the, uh, the Old Orchard condominiums. There are five deer there this morning and, um, I'm just, you know, I've, I've already told you what I have here, I don't wanna go on about it, but I, I'd like for them to do what they said they're gonna do and that the trustees do and keep it that way, like Mr. Becker said. You know, just keep it in perpetuity because there, there should be, I mean, in every area, you've got the area on people across the street and between that and the R- and between that and the arbors. A huge, huge green space between them. There's a little green space between the people on our street and Apple Valley. I've seen homeless people over near the red roof area, where it's kind of, you know, sketchy. Um, but I've never had homeless people at, uh, behind. And I just really like to keep the woods there because once if he... If you say yes, there's gonna be a lot of people moving off that street. And nobody moves off this... The street unless they die. I'm not scared how long they're there. And, yeah, we're stable. People in compartments are transient, you know? So, just leave that in your hands. And I thank you for your time, but I gotta go to work.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate you very much.
Thank you. Thank you all.
Yes, ma'am. Is there anyone else that would like to speak as an opponent? Yes, sir. Please, go ahead. All right, let me swear you in. Sir, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? So hope you got it?
Yes, I do.
All right, great. Then state your name and address for the record.
I'm Jeff Mancini. I live at 4919 Rumpkey Road. I live nearby, but not in their community. But I under... I understand the concept of overdevelopment very well because a few years ago, we had a similar situation on Rumpkey Road, a proposed overdevelopment, very high density. Fortunately, we prevailed. That was in 2018. What's happening here, in my opinion, this is black and white. Uh, this is a proposed overdevelopment. 10.3 units per acre? I mean, this is like jaw-droppingly just black and white to me. This is overdeveloped. I just want to say for the record, I'm against it. I'll leave it at that.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, Ms. Rancy. Is there anyone else that would like to speak that is a pro... Or opponent? Sorry. Yes, ma'am. I'll call you next, sir.
Judy Close.
Can you go and raise your hand? And then, uh, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? So hope you got it?
Yes.
Great. And then please state your name and address for the record.
Judy Close, 472 Portland Place.
All right.
My building is directly across from that wooded area.
Yes, ma'am.
That's where I live, right there. If you take all that down, all I'm gonna be looking at is apartments. There are deer in there. There are rabbits in there. There are... There's wildlife in there that you're gonna destroy if you take that down. We... All of us in that building, there's four... Four units in that building. All of us in that building are over 70 years old. And you want to do that to us? I might not even live through more years. Then he can do whatever he wants to do. But please, don't. Would you want that to happen in your community, really? I mean, that's my husband. He's 77. That's my neighbor. You're what, 75? Oh, okay. She's 81. I'm 73. I mean, I am gonna look directly into that. And we're gonna have people crossing over into our property. There is no homeless people living there. I've been there for 15 years. There are no homeless people. The only thing that we have for homeless are the deer, the rabbits, the birds. Please, don't do it. Please, I'm begging you. Let me live out the rest of my life in peace.
Yes, ma'am.
And the rest of us who live in that building right there. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you.
And I'm sorry for my outbursts before.
No outbursts. You're okay. It's okay. Is there anyone else that would like to speak? Oh, then actually, I promised Mr. Becker he had his hand up right when you both... So then I'll get you right next.
I have to agree with...
It's okay. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? So hope you got it?
I do.
Great.
My name's John Becker, 4122 Mount Carmel Tabasco Road.
Thank you, sir.
I do agree with Mr. Hartman that things have changed in 10 years. That's why we have the problems we have now. We've developed so much. Our water system can handle it. Our roads can handle the traffic. So that's why I say no for this development. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. Ma'am? Ma'am, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? So hope you got it?
I do.
Great. And please state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Elena Maline. I live at 478 Portland Place.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, regarding the survey that he said that he did on accidents on Mount Carmel Tabasco Road, it isn't just accidents we would be concerned about. We're to a point now where Mount Carmel Tabasco Road is a two-lane road. The way it is today, it's almost getting to be a two-lane highway. We can barely get out of our complex. The traffic is so heavy at times. Another thing, I have lived in Old Orchard for 40 years. We're gonna have problems with those apartments. People using our swimming pool, we've had the problems before. We've got the kids with their skateboards and their bicycles. We've had this problem before. When you have these apartments right directly across from us, what's gonna stop them from coming into Old Orchard? Using the pool, using it as a racing factor for skateboards and bicycles? You know, I've lived there for 40 years, and I've never had fear. But the thought of transient apartments directly across from where I live, I'm kind of afraid. With the drug abuse and the things going on today. I'm a gutsy lady, but this is starting to make me nervous. Unless you have a panelled privacy fence 10 feet tall or whatever to secure our privacy and our safety, you know, it's a nervous world today. That's basically all I really have to say.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate you very much. Thank you. Sir? I'm gonna swear you in. Sir, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? So hope you got it?
So, I think, yes.
Great. And please state your name, address for the record.
David Brock, 449 McIntosh Drive.
Great, okay.
So I'm part of the, um, Old Orchard condominium...
Yep.
...community. And, um, kind of helped facilitate the letter that the lawyer had sent over. We, you know, as a HOA community, um, gave that to our legal counsel to help present us a little bit, kind of in a, you know, more of an organized fashion.
Sure.
Um, if I'm not speaking loud enough, let me...
No, you're perfect. You're good.
So, um, obviously, there wouldn't be any real reason to review that, those 1 through 8 that we already... That was already read out loud. Uh, what I'd like to do is go to the proposed layout here where our property line, um, meets the proposed apartment. And there's no... There's some evergreen arbivideae that are planted all along, but not quite far enough. And one of the items on the, uh, on the legal letter that was sent is asking for a 6-foot shadow box fence be installed for some privacy there. Um, so that was the blueprint. It just... When this proposal came out, we didn't even think... We didn't think it was real. It was... We realized it was a proposal. Letting this build, we feel, and I feel personally, would seem to unbalance or contradict the Union Township's goals of promoting quality and organized in a well-planned community. And looking at and reading in the past in the areas that were agreed upon as far as vegetation, vegetation greenbelt, when you look at the proposed area and if you put in the greenbelt, I can't imagine how you would get a building in there. And they want to put three of them in there and a parking space. You've seen the... You have the... Where the units are in there. Um, I mean, we're talking the building... Would be 30 feet away from their property line. That's... That's probably that front door, that... Those glass doors to that back wall is 30 feet. And how they're gonna have a vegetation barrier and landscaping mounds, I just don't see it being feasible. And being, you know, congruent with what the township wants to achieve in the area. Um, you're just looking from... Looking from a perspective on change, um, it's a huge goal to have these areas and along Mount Carmel Tabasco Road to look inviting and valuable. And the Ohio Mulch moved out, and now there's some type of building going in there. We're waiting for a sign to go up. We're not sure what it is. But, you know, here again, we've got some more what looks like commercial or industrial on a street that goes into residential areas where people live. And we really kind of beg for this area and for Union Township to help manage this so that real estate agents can bring people to this area, and it's not overly congested, not overly built. Townhouses, you know, with good value aren't looking straight into that picture like I showed you there. We're not... We're not here to challenge the business practices of this. I get it. Rental, it's a big market. And it's needed. We just... We just don't want it here. Um, and as far as, um, a waiting list, I mean, the sign in front of the apartment says apartment available. That... And it's been out there for, you know, a while. That really doesn't promote that I have a waiting list and I don't have a problem renting. He has apartments available right now. These are the trash bins that we'll see every week full of trash. Yeah, they'll get emptied, but then they'll look like this until the next trash pickup. So there's a big concern in that area. And we just feel, I feel, like we're trying to put a square peg in a round hole here. And it's just not gonna fit in with the congruency of the area and I think what the area wants to achieve now and for the future. I think in the past, things have been promised, you know, fencing. Arbor Place, which is a little bit farther up. Arbor Place backs into already-built apartment complexes that we hear, we were told in the past that there would be a fence there, and there's not. So again, I reiterate, like, things have been said that would be done haven't been done. And it's affecting them because those buildings are right up against... Right up where like the word "site" is. See where the W is? W slash D O P O. Right above that W is a building, and it backs right into the apartment complex. I believe that the neighboring properties have been more than accepting of this development to this point, and it needs to stop.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else that would like to speak as against this? Yes, ma'am. Please, go ahead. Ma'am, do you... Can I raise your right hand? Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? So hope you got it?
Yes.
Great. And state your name and address for the record.
Nancy Laney, 421 McIntosh Drive.
Got it. Yeah.
This is a very sensitive topic for me because this is my family. I mean, this is Old Orchard. I've lived back there since six... For 16 years. And I've enjoyed my neighbors. I've enjoyed the green space. Every morning when I look out my window, I see birds and rabbits coming up to me every morning. Deer, birds singing to me. I've raised my three... I'm a single parent. I have three children that I raised back there. I plan on living in Union Township for a very, very long time, and I'm still pretty young, and I want to stay there. But I'm having neighbors that want to move because of this. We've got to keep the green space and stop developing because, for one thing, whenever I leave my street, McIntosh, it's... I almost got killed a couple of times. People are just racing down that street. It's not safe, and then I'm gonna become more scared because if I can see apartments right there, or, you know, it's just... I get... I'm getting a little nervous because I would probably move too because I just don't want apartments that close because there's this... I can see a problem with the creek in the back that's gonna be like probably trashed, who knows what. I do not want these apartments built. I want to keep it as it is. It's peaceful back there right now. We have a great community. My condo fees... I mean, my condo property's gone up in value. And, you know, I pay some good taxes and everything. And I expect... I would really like to keep it Old Orchard the way it is. Mount Carmel Tabasco Road is just not... There's no sidewalks, and it's just gonna get busier and busier, and there's gonna be a safety issue in Union Township. We don't... We just cannot handle this. It's too close. I've heard people talking earlier with the other issues, you know, earlier, and I feel the same way. I kept nodding my head. We're dealing with the same thing. There's no homeless people back there where I live. I live at the end, right where the parking lot's gonna be. That's where you're thinking about building. I live at 421 McIntosh. If you drive back there, that's where I am. I want to keep it as it is. And I want to keep my neighbors. They want... They're wanting to move out of Union Township because of this. So please, please, listen to all of us, and let's keep our neighbors happy and keep the green space. And not let... And stop Prem from developing. We've got to stop this. I mean, I'm really... I'm very thankful that you developed Uncle Jim's and all that. But this is where people live. We live here. And I just want to keep my kids, you know, safe and everything, so I appreciate your time.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else that would like to speak that is an opponent against this case? Go. No? Okay. Go on. Great. We go swear again. Ma'am, do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? So hope you got it?
I do.
Okay. Please state your name and address for the record.
Patty Philpott, 4130 Mount Carmel Tabasco Road. And for the record, we have the property 4132 Mount Carmel Tabasco Road. Um, I do appreciate the gentleman coming out and talking with JR. He went out of his way, made himself very available to discuss the water problem. They did address some of the problems that he saw, and I appreciate that. My concern is future runoff. Um, to keep the water flowing as it needs to, to keep the business of the daycare, which I'm hoping will be productive here soon because we're not making any money. And, um, the water pressure is the issue. And I think that's it, just for the record. Thanks.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to speak that is against this case, as an opponent? Okay, seen none. Uh, Mr. Hartman, I'll extend the same offer that last time. Did you like any rebuttal, or are you good? Roger that. All right. I'm gonna go ahead and close public comments. And then, um, gentlemen, I'll go and open up for the board. Uh, Mr. Becker, would you like to start?
Uh, sure. You know, I guess for the record, I'll repeat what I said with the previous case. And, um, you know, most of it would apply. I guess one of the differences, I described the first case as a hard one. Uh, this one is not as hard. But, you know, we... There's been discussion tonight about density, traffic, public safety concerns, proximity to single-family homes. Uh, there's even more greater significant, uh, public opposition. And, um, and, you know, and this key clause that I read earlier, that the agreement back, uh, in 2013 was that there would be no clearing of this, uh, property, and it was to be preserved in perpetuity. For me, this is an easy no vote on this zoning request.
Thank you, Mr. Becker. Mr. Luke?
Yeah, Mr. Becker, thanks for identifying that, calling out the, uh, no-clearing, uh, preserved in perpetuity. That obviously stands out very clear to me as well. And to the proponents of the case, again, I always enjoy and appreciate investment and interest in Union Township. Sorry that this sounds to be a difficult case and growing your footprint and your business there. I'd say get with our staff and see if there's other locations in the township where it makes sense because the perspective I see with this right now, that 125 feet directly across and adding buildings into that, uh, even if you take away the perpetuity comment for green space, I do see that there's... From property management perspective, it's very difficult for you to maintain residents from... That you rent to, from walking out and wanting to cross through to their streets and go up to the pool or do things like that. And then, what do we get? We get an increased cost for service, and we have more police... You know, not necessarily saying that you're, you know, there's creating issues there, but we have to... We have to address... address calls for service. And so from the board's perspective, we have to look at smart development where it's appropriate. And that's where we take into account things that balance out, the costs of the taxpayer and, and the taxes. And, you know, if we, if we support something that generates an increased cost of the services to support it, it's just, it goes against one of the key tenants that I think all three of us here agree to, and that's no more taxes and, and we don't want to see anything that drives those costs up. So that weighs in heavily for me as well. But in, in short, and there's one thing I want to just state, gentlemen, Mr. Mancini made a reference of the residents prevailed. That's a little bit different of a case. They went through a legal challenge and they did not have a public hearing. This is a public hearing where we're hearing proponent and opponent testimony, so, so that, that's just a little bit of a different case in general. But I do feel the sense of what he's sharing, how the residents bought in to something. Mr. Becker, you're identifying this perpetuity to be preserved, the, as no clearing zone to be preserved in perpetuity? That's something that these people have bought into because it's part of the zoning. If they can't rely and trust on that, what can they rely and trust on? And again, that's, that's if it would be, you know, a perfect site. I think there's a few different things with the site itself that work against, that'll work against it. And I think, you know, bottom line, it comes down to the board for, you know, just safeguard and integrity and character of, of the community and that it is essential to prioritize smart development that will enhance or, or maintain property values, preserve kind of the harmony in the neighborhoods and, and, and preserve a high quality of life for, for the residents around. So that, my area is to, to also second with a, with a vote of no support.
I hope everyone, as chairman, I, I try my best and I hope everyone felt like, whether your side wins or loses, that you felt like you were heard. And I really wanted to make sure you have all the time you wanted to talk about whatever you wanted. Personal stories and, and what you think for the future of your township, what you want to see. I, I really hope you felt like your voice was heard. And so I, I'm all for development. I absolutely am, but it has to be smart development and, and, you know, I, when I ran, I, I made a campaign promise and I try my best to never break a promise. Sometimes it happens, but I try very hard not to. But we have to do smart development and, and we have to preserve our green space. And, and I'm looking around, I mean, just for future reference, in this specific area, so you folks know, you know, I'm looking at, I look at Arbers, I look at the Old Orchard. You got green space there. I look across the street at Waterbury Apartments, they've got a lot of green space there. I wouldn't be okay with any of you, any of those folks wanting to expand and tear down more woods in the residential area. I just wouldn't unless, but now I do agree, Mr. Herman, times do change and I'm counting, you know, I'm just going to quickly count off, I see 15 homes along Orchard Lane right here. And if some developer wanted to come in and buy every one of those houses out and we make that apartment row, I would reconsider. But you, you can't in good faith put three big buildings right in these people's backyard and tear down their woods. I'm sorry, I just can't be okay with that. And I hope you understand, I, I really, because I understand where you're coming from, from an investment. I do. I do, folks, I really do. But made a promise and intend to keep it and, and I'm not saying I'm no against all apartments, but just not here. It's just, you can't throw it right up in the middle of these residential homes with these beautiful woods in the backyard. You know, there's a time and a place for it and I don't think it's here, so. With that, gentlemen, no more discussion. Gentlemen, I'll entertain a motion to deny Union Township zoning case 3-13-Zeez and Zula. So moved.
Second.
Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Luke?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. Thank you, folks, for all coming up. Appreciate that. And, hey.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Hartman. Let's say before everyone packs up and goes, you guys all live in Mount Carmel area, right?
Yes.
We're going to be talking about Mount Carmel in a minute. You might want to stick around.
So, right? Yes, but it is 8:50 and, gentlemen, five minutes, five minutes. I'm going to entertain a motion to recess for five minutes.
So moved.
Say again.
Mr. Campbell?
I don't like it, but.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Luke?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Were adjourned at, at, at break at 8:52.
Mr. Hartman?
Entertained a motion to exit that brief recess.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker.
Yes.
Mr. Logue.
Yes.
Mr. Dills.
Yes.
We're out of recess at nine o'clock P.M.
Great. Okay, we are up to old business and let's do the playground equipment discussion. Ms. Ayers, you want to introduce that at all?
I do. Sorry, I moved my slides forward here a bit. Let me get back to where we need to be. But we've had some ongoing discussions and before you, a little later in the evening, there'll be a vote on some financing regarding two. I'm going to group the first two items together in general about two improvements to Klepper Park. First to discuss is the exchange and updating of playground equipment at Klepper. Just to recap, we did receive a grant from the county CDBG program through the county to replace the playground equipment. At the time of application, we were requesting $125,000 in grant funding. We pledged match funds, the amount of $225,000. That was, I believe, about a year and a half ago when we put in that application. When we received the grant, we went out and talked to a few suppliers about potential sets to purchase. We also took this matter to the Parks and Recreation Committee to ask what sort of improvements they would like to see and what equipment they would like to see. They priced out and Mr. Glisson presented to you at the last work session about some potential equipment that was totaling about $540,000. I know there were some concerns about the cost, so I asked Mr. Taylor and he was great about going out to some of the other local suppliers that we got from other local municipalities and went and tried to get some additional bids. We sent to the other companies the picture of what we had laid out and some of the specs, but not the cost, to see what sort of pricing we would get back. We did receive a few more bids. All of them were fairly similar. The original bid was 540. We received a bid for 537. And then we received this bid that I'm going to go over to 510,000. This bid did also include a lesser option of 438,000, but that 438 was not near the amount of equipment that we receive in these top bids. So make sure we're comparing apples to apples and oranges to oranges there. So staff is recommending that you move forward with a bid for 510,000 from Midstates Recreation. This would be the overview of the set that we would receive. Some additional pictures. One of the things I did like about this set was the full handicap accessible nature of a lot of the play equipment. And
entertain a motion to exit that brief recess.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker.
Yes.
Mr. Logue.
Yes.
Mr. Dills.
Yes.
We're out of recess at nine o'clock P.M.
Great. Okay, we are up to old business and let's do the playground equipment discussion. Ms. Ayers, you want to introduce that at all?
I do. Sorry, I moved my slides forward here a bit. Let me get back to where we need to be. But we've had some ongoing discussions and before you, a little later in the evening, there'll be a vote on some financing regarding two. I'm going to group the first two items together in general about two improvements to Klepper Park. First to discuss is the exchange and updating of playground equipment at Klepper. Just to recap, we did receive a grant from the county CDBG program through the county to replace the playground equipment. At the time of application, we were requesting $125,000 in grant funding. We pledged match funds, the amount of $225,000. That was, I believe, about a year and a half ago when we put in that application. When we received the grant, we went out and talked to a few suppliers about potential sets to purchase. We also took this matter to the Parks and Recreation Committee to ask what sort of improvements they would like to see and what equipment they would like to see. They priced out and Mr. Glisson presented to you at the last work session about some potential equipment that was totaling about $540,000. I know there were some concerns about the cost, so I asked Mr. Taylor and he was great about going out to some of the other local suppliers that we got from other local municipalities and went and tried to get some additional bids. We sent to the other companies the picture of what we had laid out and some of the specs, but not the cost, to see what sort of pricing we would get back. We did receive a few more bids. All of them were fairly similar. The original bid was 540. We received a bid for 537. And then we received this bid that I'm going to go over to 510,000. This bid did also include a lesser option of 438,000, but that 438 was not near the amount of equipment that we receive in these top bids. So make sure we're comparing apples to apples and oranges to oranges there. So staff is recommending that you move forward with a bid for 510,000 from Midstates Recreation. This would be the overview of the set that we would receive. Some additional pictures. One of the things I did like about this set was the full handicap accessible nature of a lot of the play equipment. And so we originally showed you a bid about 540,000, recommending moving forward with Midstates Recreation at 510. I know this is a significant increase from where we had originally put this application in for the grant funding. However, I do think there's twofold. One, we are suffering, obviously, from the inflationary environment. I was reading a study indicating that construction materials were up 36% year over year. We've had some strong inflation in this arena. Also, the quote that was originally used to procure the grant was strict replacement. It didn't enhance any of the features at the park, so it was pretty much taking what we had before, getting a newer version of it and calling it a day. This, I think, you would find is an enhancement of the offerings at the park, and so there is some cost associated with that. I did speak with our legal counsel about the potential use of ARPA funds to pay for this and the match funds. They gave us the green light, indicated it would be an eligible expense, and they didn't have any concerns about the match, the interaction with the match funds. Given the nature of our ARPA funding, I am recommending that's what we do this evening is use some of the remaining ARPA funds to make these purchases. Just for a break to recap, we received about $5.1 million in ARPA funds. We've spent $494,000 in breathing apparatuses for the fire department. A little over a million dollars on capital purchase for vehicles in the police, fire, and service departments. And we've pledged a million dollars in economic development funds for the East Gate Route 32 corridor project. That does leave us an unplugged balance of $2.561 million. So we do have sufficient funding in this. Would note, we do have sufficient general fund funding, but proposing ARPA today so that we're starting to utilize these funds and it means that we can make some immediate improvements in the township. I can move on if you would like to pick up on courts or if you'd like to ask questions about playgrounds, however you'd like to handle it.
I got a question. How much did you say was the grant?
So we have received in grants funds $125,000.
$125.
For that, we had previously pledged match funds of $225,000.
Okay, and what is the source of the grant?
It's the CDBG program through Claremont County, so it's the Community Development Block Grant.
Is that state money, federal money, or both?
Um, I believe it is federal money from HUD that funnels through the state.
Okay. All right, thank you. So if I'm reading that correctly, the grant's for $125,000 and we have to minimum spend $225,000 to get the $125.
That's correct.
Okay, got it. Okay, so minimum, the cost of the project has to be $350,000.
Yes, sir.
Got it. Okay. Ms. Logue, you have any question for her? No? Okay, great. Yeah, pickleball court.
Okay.
And this is all, just so everyone knows, this is all Klepper Park that we're talking about. Okay.
Like we received a grant for playground equipment, we had also received a grant through the State of Ohio Capitol Budget Process for fiscal year '23 to '24. We have received $122,000 for the placement of six pickleball courts at Klepper Park. Excuse me. At the time, there was match funds pledged at $125,000. This item went out for bid earlier this year. We received bids back. The low cost for the bid is $414,423.50. This also went through the Parks and Recreation Committee and some local residents that have a particular interest in pickleball and asking about what the proper setup and the access and use issues would be for the court. This would be, as the bid is given, it would go into Klepper Park. You could see the middle area. There's a concrete pad. It would be in that area to be adjacent to the parking. This was the rough layout, so you could tell the parking pad would be to the lower right-hand quarter here. And then we'd have six pickleball courts and then one tennis court that could also be used for pickleball in the occasion that there's no tennis courts being used. Received a lot of good feedback in the community about putting in new pickleball courts. We do have some at Veterans Park. Anecdotally, when I drive by, they are always crowded and have been very well used. I think this is another amenity that the community has some interest in receiving. This similarly, I asked council about potentially using ARPA funds for this, and we've received the indication that this would be an acceptable expense as well.
Ms. Ayers, can you go back to the cost slide?
Yes.
So this is all out of pocket. $678. Say 450 if. Mr. Becker, do you have any questions?
Uh, no.
Ms. Logue?
I do have one question, Ms. Ayers. I know it's for a new business item later for item Delta, the donation of property. But can you just preview a little bit of how that interacts with the playground equipment discussion?
I think we've had a lot of conversations here, as well as other groups, the Parks and Recreation Committee, about how we better activate our outdoor spaces and providing the great mix and availability of amenities to residents, which I wholeheartedly support. You know, new playground equipment and new facilities at Klepper is one way of doing that. Some looking at new facilities and things like dog parks and opportunities at Veterans Park. But we also maintain what I'm going to call a pocket park, for lack of a more eloquent term, in the Mount Carmel area near Damaran Lane, near the Legion in Old Mount Carmel, that is smaller and has no parking at the moment, no dedicated parking, I should say. There's some street parking options, and I don't think is utilized to the extent that it could be. So in trying to figure out some ways to help activate that space, I asked staff to reach out to the apartment complex that is directly across the street from the Pocket Park and ask if they'd be interested in partnering with us and potentially donating some land to the township. There's some tax benefits for them and perhaps we could get some additional land for a park. They indicated they'd be receptive, and so we're going to talk about that in a little bit. But the idea is, these are some overarching moves to help activate our outdoor spaces.
Thank you, Ms. Ayers. Mr. Becker? Please go ahead.
Follow-up comment or question. So the grant for the pickleball, that was, that's out of the state capital budget grant. Is that correct?
Correct.
Is it $122,000?
Yes.
The pledge is $125.
The, so just running the numbers here, the playground equipment, 510 less $125 grant gets you about $386,000?
I'll believe your math. I don't have it in front of me.
And the pickleball court, you got $414,000 minus $122,000, the grant brings us to $292,500 for the pickleball?
That's correct.
For our out-of-pocket. So if we do both projects together, our out-of-pocket is $678,000 after accounting for both of those grants.
I had a different.
Kind of in round numbers.
I had a different number for that, but not me.
To accept those grant funds.
So it sounds like the one grant's a federal grant, the other's a state grant. Good to know the source of the funds. They're both approximately same amount.
Yeah, I'll share a little perspective on the CDBG grant. I had noticed worn and worn down equipment and just different issues at the Klepper Park. And in the early discussion that I had, meeting with Mike McNamara at the time, County Economic Development, he said, you know, we can likely, you know, help with pursuing CDBG grant funding and explain what that was in that area. And we took a look in that area qualified, so that was initiative for the staff at the time to put that forward as an application for CDBG grant funding. Because, you know, it was that federal HUD type program, so just to refer version update and make it a clean area.
That's all I got. I mean, good. Was that the math? Yeah, is my math wrong? You said 678. I came up with 682. I was over what you said.
Close enough.
Okay, fair enough. Okay. Okay, moving on. Okay, new business? Oh, Ms. Ayers, unless you had anything else to add. Oh, no, I'm sorry. Did you want to do the meeting agenda, consent agenda? I'm sorry.
That would be the next old business item, if I may briefly.
Please, yeah, I'm sorry. Let me skip over that.
That's okay. One of the other items trustees had asked me to take a look into was the use of a consent agenda on the meeting agenda for our regular business meetings. Consent agendas have not been used here in the township, to my knowledge, but in this type of setting are typically used for things that are very routine, that are, you know, your kind of day-to-day run-of-the-mill business and can be read once, voted once as a general agenda and helps to speed up and streamline the process of the meeting. So I was asked to take a look at what that would look like for the township. So this would be an amendment to our meeting rules if we decided we wanted to move forward. From what I could view, the best definition would be consent agenda is considered routine and acted by one motion, one vote of consent, no separate discussion of items. If there's an item on the consent agenda that a trustee would like to discuss, it would simply be removed from the consent agenda, moved to the motion agenda. So there is always that stopgap. In looking at our day-to-day business, I could see potential items to be considered under the consent agenda being the approval of minutes from previous meetings, hirings of employees, resignations of employees, approval of payments provided by Mr. Campbell's office, approval of the monthly financial reports, things we would prefer to do for establishing days for ongoing annual activities like junk days, authorizing the advertising of bids, authorizing the initial applications for grants, those items that would then come back to the trustees for later action. They could initially be authorized via consent agenda. In order to get a visualization of this, I took a random pass meeting, it just happened to be this February, and said, what would this look like in application? So there's no method other than I just happened to pick up this file first. So you can see how a meeting under the proposed thought would look is to say that we start with correspondence and move into special proclamations and presentations, public comments, department reports, any old business, new business. We would start with a consent agenda for which we would read out each of those items and then have one vote to accept them as a single item, unless there was discussion, in which case any one of those items could be removed from the agenda. Then we would move to the motion agenda, for which we could consider things like the approval of purchase orders as we decide they need to be read out, discussion of any policies or township issues that we need to discuss, and then any items that are a little bit more involved that we think require individual discussion. In this case, we were discussing the aggregation program and having that as a separate item for approval. Then we would move forward to our resolutions, which are the items that are unique, different, and need individual enumeration in the record and are handled that way. So motion and resolutions would be handled similarly to how we handle them now. We'd be pulling out to a consent agenda, that which is very routine, very day-to-day business, to put those under one vote of consent.
Ms. Ayers, so just so I understand hypothetically, if we were to vote on this tonight, next month's meeting, let's look at item A, consent agenda. Would I read off every one of those items and then we have one vote, or do I just read off the consent item?
It can be done either way. Typically, how I've seen it done, for whatever that's worth, is that you would read this. So you would say, you know, we're reaching our consent agenda. We're considering the approval of minutes from January 10 business, January 10 zoning, the approval of payments and financial reports, the appointments to the Parks and Recreation Committee as submitted. And we would go through like that and then say and ask for, is there one vote to accept the consent agenda? And then Mr. Campbell would do a roll call vote for one time for all of those items.
Makes sense tonight. Makes sense. I like it. Set a new precedence. I'm good with it.
Okay.
Thank you, gentlemen. That's something I want to share. You've heard me talk about that exciting from, again, picked it up at the Township Association Conference and thought, wow. So I think that's good. Thank you.
The only items, I assume, because it says approval of purchase orders, but the ones that exceed 10,000, that would not be on it. I want those still read itemized.
Yeah, so what you'll notice is on the consent agenda, there's the approval of payments and monthly financial reports. That would be the items that are submitted by Mr. Campbell's office that we are currently just not read out. They're just accepted. You'll see the first item on the motion agenda is the approval of purchase orders. And so that would be the items that I traditionally read out that are the over 10,000 or whatever number we decide to go with moving forward. So that those would be on a motion item addressed by themselves.
And so if hypothetically in item A, if Mr. Becker or Logue wanted to move one of those items, scratch it, so we do it individually, do I just make a motion for that with the exception of item B, approval of payments?
Correct. And then that would inherently go to the motion agenda next where it could be discussed individually.
Easy. I like it. Makes sense.
Okay. This needs to be done by an amendment to the meeting rules. So at the next meeting, I'll bring back in front of you a motion to make those meeting rule amendments and then a draft of what the new meeting rules would look like. So I'll give you a little bit of time. If you have any additional feedback as you think about it, to let me know. Otherwise, it'll come back to you for a vote on a motion to amend the meeting rules at the next meeting.
Perfect.
Can we, should we save that for the regular business meeting and not the special on June 22nd?
I'll leave that to you, gentlemen, what you're most comfortable with. You can let me know about that at a different time.
So we have that opportunity there. Mr. Chairman, if you want to have it on the agenda for the 22nd.
Oh, for zoning.
I mean.
I can add it to like.
Yeah, it's just two weeks to think about it. Yeah, it's easy.
Certainly will.
Yeah, I'm good with it. Mr. Becker, you good with it? Okay, easy. Okay. Perfect. Go ahead, go ahead.
Can I ask a question? Ms. Ayers, I'm backing up just a second, but the next steps on items Alpha and Bravo, playground and pickleball, what are the next steps there? We have the discussion on here right now, but.
You will notice later in the evening, there is a resolution to approve the payments through, using the ARPA funds.
Is, okay, that's that.
So if you would choose to approve it to pay for it, then we would issue the purchase orders and get rolling on it.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Cool. All right, new business. So moving on, and then, Ms. Ayers, we will be voting on item A and B tonight, correct? Or no? For old business?
A and B, we will discuss a little later as we get to the resolutions.
Right, perfect. Okay. For the playground equipment and the pickleball courts. Okay, so moving on to.
And that's, that's what Sharon, to people that's around the Mount Carmel area that are still sitting here, that's part of the.
Yeah, so that's kind of a, that's kind of the future of that park, kind of, is what we decide on the pickleball courts and also the playground equipment.
Klepper, but then that also has the ability to impact Mount Carmel Park as well.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. So, perfect. So new business, okay. Item A, gentlemen, I'll entertain a motion to approve payments as prepared by Mr. Ron Campbell, our fiscal officer.
So moved.
Second.
Seen a discussion. Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Gentlemen, entertain a motion for approval of monthly financial report as prepared by Mr. Ron Campbell, our fiscal officer.
So moved.
Second.
Seen a discussion. Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, Ms. Ayers, you go and present our purchase orders exceeding $10,000, please.
Yes, sir. First matters for Duke Energy, Pacific Centered Gas and Electric, $40,000. Second is total quality logistics for Economic Development Agreement for May of 2023 in the amount of $27,327.82. We have the Union Township Community Improvement Corporation for Economic Development Funds in the amount of $55,000. Next is Bachmann's for Air Conditioner Replacement, Station 49, $15,000. Next is Locality Media Incorporated Service Agreement for the first due-up size program, $16,500. Mullins Maintenance LLC for outside evidence storage building, $14,999.95. Fleet Core Technologies, estimated fuel usage, $27,000. Next is Anthony Scott Dodson, Klepper Park Dog Fencing, $29,000. Finally, Sibyl and Environmental Consultants Incorporated for Glen Willow Dam decommissioning, $27,500.
All right, gentlemen, I will entertain a motion.
Can I ask a question?
Yeah, okay, yeah, I'm sorry. Go ahead. Mr. Questions for Ms. Ayers.
Actually, Chief Dyming, service agreement for first due size-up program, $16,500. What is that briefly?
That is a software that we use for pre-planning. It allows us to look at pre-plans and information on buildings that we're responding to on our computers and on our phones as we arrive on the scene. So information that would be in the county auditor's website and all that is available to the firefighters as they arrive on the scene. That is a program that's also used, just for what it's worth, by Batavia Township Central Joint Fire and EMS. So when they make mutual runs into Union Township, they have access to that information, vice versa. When we make mutual aid runs into Batavia Township, we have access to that information.
Okay. The other question, Mr. Taylor, what's going on? What's the, what is the Glen Willow Dam? Why are we decommissioning it and what are we getting for $27,500? What's the story behind all that?
So it, I believe, as you are aware, we took, we accepted Glen Willow Dam. It's been a few years ago.
I remember, yeah.
And it falls under the purview of ODNR because it has a dam that is there. So we have to have it inspected annually by ODNR, and it was found that it was not in compliance with ODNR's regulations. We have tried to declassify that to get it to a lesser level to where we didn't have to have a mechanical overflow. So as part of this, we are trying to, we've now moved into a different level where we are basically going to try and cut off some of the dam as far as, we're going to get engineering done and we have to come up with plans to basically get outside of that level to where ODNR won't even be a factor anymore. And we'll be able to do, I guess, what we want to do, I guess, for the lack of better terms.
Thank you.
That's a short version.
The public probably has no idea what any of those are. Tell them where it is.
Yeah, it's where, if anybody knows where Ellison Watts is, it's the lake right next to it. So it's right off of Klepper Lane, the new extension.
Yeah, I didn't know anything about this until I was going through numbers, was that earlier this year, last year? For doing financial reports, I'm going through these. I was looking, what are all these expenses for a dam? We have a dam in Union Township. That's what I started, that's what first I learned about it.
Yes.
All right, thank you. That's all I have.
Gentlemen, I'll entertain, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Logue, do you have any?
No.
I'll entertain a motion for the approval of purchase orders as recommended by Ms. Susan Ayers.
So moved.
Second.
Seen a discussion. Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, Ms. Ayers, you want to explain item D, donation of property?
Yes, sir. Like we briefly spoke about, and the idea that we're trying to activate some of our outdoor spaces, I think there's an opportunity for Mount Carmel Park, what is now a pocket park, to do some expansion in the area. I asked staff and Mr. McCrory was great about contacting the apartment complex that owns the parcel that is across the street from Mount Carmel Park, asked if they'd consider working with us to donate a portion of that lane so that we can put in some additional parking, some facilities available. So they are willing to donate what is highlighted here in that turquoisey blue color. It is about a little less than acreage, .91 acres, that would be donated to the township, would give us some opportunity to expand parking and services at Mount Carmel Park. All they are asking in return is that we effectively pay the costs of transfer, so the filing with the county, some of the survey items. It's a pretty minor cost to get that piece of property that we can use as the start of a conversation for expanding Mount Carmel Park. Just so the board and the public are aware, this is not the last conversation we've had about this. We've also had some conversations with the Legion that owns the land that is under the picture, unfortunately, about is there some potential partnerships for working in that area and doing some additional public services in that area. They have been wonderful partners in wanting to talk to us about what their plans are, what our plans are, and trying to work something out. I don't have that aspect ready to discuss with you this evening, but knowing that there are some ongoing conversations, we just want to get this piece in place so that we can continue to have those conversations with other people with the idea that we want to make smart expansion to the services in this area if we can.
Excellent. Wonderful. Any questions for Ms. Ayers?
Mr. Becker?
I'm good.
Thank you for moving that forward, Ms. Ayers.
Ms. Ayers, that's a no-brainer. It's extremely nice of them. They need to really, I mean, I don't know, buy some cookies or something. It's incredibly nice of them to donate an acre of land for Mount Carmel Park, right? So incredible. That's great. Excellent. We go and vote on this, correct?
Yes, I would ask if there's a motion to accept the donation and allow me to sign the documents necessary to make that happen.
Did you say that for me? Okay, gentlemen, I'll entertain a motion for the donation of property, of acceptance of roughly .91 acres of property in the area of New Lawn Court, Ravenwood Court, and Damaran Lane, and further authorizing the township administrator to execute all necessary donation agreements.
So moved.
Second.
Seen a discussion. Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Good. Moving on, approval of resolutions. Ms. Ayers, I'll throw it over to you, resolution 2023-19.
Thank you. A little while ago, we approved an initial vacation for Banks Road. This, you may have realized, or remember, this was a 1920s or 1930s right-of-way that was maintained in the, in the area of Banks Road that had never been utilized by public services. The property owners approached us and asked if we'd consider vacating that so that it can then return to the adjacent property owners. We, from the staff reviewed it, saw no interest in maintaining it, would like to get that back in the hands of the public. We passed the initial resolution. It went to Claremont County by statute. They approved the vacation again by statute. It comes back to us for final approval. So what you have in front of you is the final approval.
Perfect. Gentlemen, any questions for Ms. Ayers?
No.
Good. Mr. Logan, good.
Thank you.
All right, gentlemen, I'll entertain a motion for resolution 2023, resolution declaring a portion of Banks Road vacated and declaring an emergency.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, Ms. Ayers, resolution 2023-20.
Thank you, sir. You'll notice this is familiar year to year. We work with the Claremont County Township Association and what they call the apportionment for the undivided local government fund. So the state budgets money to go to local government entities. That goes first to the county. The county maintains a portion of it and then it gets further distributed to the local government, such as Union Township. There is a statutory way to divide it and then there is an option for the, the local entities to decide how to apportion it amongst themselves. We've had some ongoing discussions with the entities. We've traditionally been passing a year-long allocation and then having these negotiations year after year. What is before you now is actually a five-year agreement that would provide some finality and predictability to the apportionment every year and save us from having to do this every year. Under the agreement, the county receives 48.545% of the allocation and then each local government gets a associated percentage. Union Township will be picking up the largest share in the county at 15.2%. This does represent slightly less than we received this year, but it is for the sake of getting that predictability in the five-year arrangement. It provides for some of the smaller townships to receive slightly more and the larger townships are taking a bit of a cut.
Good. Gentlemen, any questions for Ms. Ayers?
No.
Hopefully, our representative, Jean Schmidt, Adam Burkey, will fight to get us more later on.
Indeed.
All right, gentlemen, I'll entertain a motion for resolution 2023-20, resolution authorizing the adoption of alternative method of point, apportionment, apportionment, is that a word?
Yes.
Of the undivided local government fund for calendar year 2024 to 2029.
So moved.
Second.
No discussion, Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Moving on, resolution 2023-21, Ms. Ayers.
Thank you, sir. This is nuisance abatement resolution. We do this every so often. Mr. Burkey, the zoning department has worked diligently to investigate the complaints that come into the office, have uncovered some properties that we believe may potentially need to go in and abate ourselves. So we've had some ongoing discussions with these property owners. The problems have not been resolved at this point in time, so we're asking for your authority to go in and abate the nuisances when they still exist. So just for the record, this does involve seven properties, 542 Breezy Lane, 543 State Route 125, 4908 Beechwood Road, 830 and 834 State Route 125, 1016 Glen Estine Lane, 4078 Mount Carmel Tabasco, 4278 Beauchamont Drive. I did have a question come to me this week about what would happen if one of these properties would have corrected the problem prior to us getting there. If we get there and the property's been abated, we simply don't do anything and nothing happens up to this point in time, but there's no problem with approving this, it just provides us the authority to do so if the problem still exists.
Gentlemen, any questions for Ms. Ayers?
No.
Mr. Becker?
I, I just wanted to make a comment.
Please.
So I drove by all these properties. The one, I guess, was most shocking was the 452 Breezy Lane. What it reminded me of was repo. Back, back in 2008, we saw a lot of properties that were, that were getting repossessed and, you know, a lot of what were nice houses just dilapidated, deteriorated, and that's what this looks like. It was really pretty sad. And some of these other ones I drove by, it's like, you know, how, why, how and why do people live this way? And others that look like they, they were just abandoned houses. So I appreciate our inspector being on top of this. I guess the one address I'd like to add to all of this is the, it used to be, I think, a Valero gas station on the corner of Bennett Road and, and Withinsville on 125. I get complaints about that junkyard all the time. That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I know, I know, I hate this. I know, I know Mr. Burkey does a fine job and I know he's exhausted all efforts to get to this point. I will not judge, I have no idea, I don't know their story, I've never talked to these people. You just hope it's not like an elderly person that's tied up or somebody with an injury that physically can't, or they don't have the money to hire a lawn care, I don't know. But at the end of the day, if you own property, you got to take care of it, so. Mr. Logan, do you have anything else?
I mean, our, to that point, our safety services is, is at least involved as far as if there's a wellness check that's needed. So to, to put your mind at ease on that, that is something that our, our staff definitely works, works forward with to, to verify that that is not the case, so.
Fair enough.
Absolutely. Other than that, no.
All right. I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna read off all these addresses. So, gentlemen, I'll entertain a motion for resolution 2023-21, nuisance abatement, abatement resolution.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And Ms. Ayers, I want to ask a question. So when we get to, not this next resolution, following one, is that when we're going to go back to the playground and pickleball court discussion?
Yes.
Roger that, okay. All right, resolution 2023-22, Ms. Ayers, go and take it away.
A few months ago, you authorized some vehicles from the fire department to go-to auction through the City of Cincinnati Auto Auction. One of those did not sell, a 1992 Seagrave Ariel truck. We received a request from the Lebanon Historic Fire Department about potentially taking possession of that vehicle for a display they use effectively, for lack of a more eloquent term, as a museum, displaying some items that have ties to the Lebanon Fire Department. It's my understanding, Chief, and correct me if I'm wrong, that this particular truck actually was configured and originally procured by Lebanon Fire Department. So this 501C3 has a red, developed interest in obtaining it. Given that it did not sell at auction and we have little other use for it, I'm asking you of nature of goodwill to sell it to them for $1.
Good. Any questions for Ms. Ayers?
I've got one comment and one question. So I've, I've seen that truck out at the Old Seventy-Four and that truck, piece of history there, is a truck that in 2005, when I came home from Iraq from a combat deployment, I was at my parents' house with a big American flag hanging from the ladder hung over, over the, over the house. So that was a welcoming home that they did.
That's fantastic.
It was interesting to be walking around our fire department one day and see it sitting there.
You should have been on it.
Apparently. Maybe you should have.
I still need it in my driveway.
But thank you.
All right.
On the other hand, since I'm getting an electric vehicle, I might need to put out the fire.
That's funny. Gentlemen, I'll entertain a motion for resolution 2023-22, resolution authorizing the sale of the vehicle.
So moved.
Second.
Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, Ms. Ayers, resolution 2023-23, that's what the rest of these folks are probably waiting on.
Thank you. This is a continuation from the pickleball and playground discussion. This would allow us to pay for the items out of the ARPA funds and proceed with the procurement. I would note, and I apologize for this, when Mr. Becker took me for a loop when he was mentioning the numbers, because I apparently had some math errors earlier. Listed in Section 3 of this legislation, as it's typed in front of you, indicates the wrong number. So I just want to make sure that we're asking you to approve it with a funding at 678-399.25.
Say that again.
678-399.25. I apologize for the error. I don't know what I was thinking.
Yeah, it's the advantage of sitting next to the fiscal officer.
Yeah.
He tell, he just tells me what to say and I write down the numbers.
In all fairness, I think what happened was we looked at the original quotes.
Yeah.
And that was to get, to get the matches. That was the difference, but with the inflation, that's what did it.
I just want to make it very clear, you know, what you would be approving this evening, and I apologize for the error. You can make that amendment as you choose to, if you would choose to adopt this, that we would make it subject to that amendment, that we're all clear that's the amount that would be spent.
No problem.
Good.
Thank you.
All right, Mr. Becker, open it up, sir.
Okay. I've been struggling with this, I have mixed feelings on it, both of them, whether you're talking to pickleball or the, or the playground equipment, you know, folks, it's a lot of money. You know, when I, when I ran for this office, same when I ran for state representative, you know, my, you know, my platform was not, I want to spend more of your money. And, and, you know, higher spending always leads to higher taxes. You know, they are linked, you know, it's a matter of priorities. This, this ARPA money could be used for public safety expenses, could be used for roads, you know, a lot of other things. Matter being prudent with, with the taxpayers' spending. And, you know, we, we're talking 678,400. You know, if that's not too much, how much is too much? What if this were a million dollars? Is that, is that okay? Two million? I mean, there's got to be an upper limit on how much we're willing to spend. And I just cannot justify spending the people's money on, on, on these items. I'm a no vote.
Mr. Logan?
So the staff pursued the CDBG grant, received the $122,000 in funding, there was the match. And then also likewise, there's time and energy put into pursuing the state capital dollars for the pickleball courts. The 160, in my mind, we've had community feedback, but I just look at it from the aspect of $160,000 investment in the playground, pickleball court area, pickleball court more. It's just, it's an investment in our community. That's my belief. These amenities are highly anticipated by our neighbors and schools. I've talked to school board members and students in the area. Enhances the quality of life for all residents. Also believe investing in our parks and facilities helps us stay competitive, whether there are communities that do have levies for park improvements. So we, I think we're all committed to no, no new taxes, no higher taxes. So to me, the project also has the potential to increase property values and attract further investment in our area, along with pushing out crime and making the community safer. If you subscribe to a broken window concept by fixing and upgrading the equipment, that can be also potentially repurposed for growth and reinvestment in the Mount Carmel area as well, too. So I fully support, you know, the valuable community feedback that we received through, one, the surveys, and I know Ms. Ayers is going to be, I guess, more detailed in, but I asked her to be able to see that data and the recommendations of our Parks and Recreation Board who have worked on putting together a plan and project. Again, I was very happy with the first stood-up citizen engagement board. And, I mean, I talked with Mr. McGee and he said that back in the early 2000s, they had one. So it was unfortunate for one to go away, but it's great for this board to be able to stand that up again. So with that, yeah, just the dedicated citizen volunteers, you know, the time and hours and hard work on this project, I just, I believe that they deserve our support and believe that the community members around that area. I agree with Mr. Becker, we are investing in safety services in different areas, but this is something for us to be competitive and drive investment dollars into the township and increase property values in a good way, but provide a good amenity for people all the way around.
So I hear a no and I hear a yes, okay.
Time, Becker. What's it going to be, Mr. Chairman?
Oh, man. So, Mr. Taylor, I'm going to ask you a couple of questions, sir. The playground equipment, what, what warranty does that come with?
The main components of the playground equipment comes with a 25-year warranty.
Okay.
There's a 15-year warranty on the deck, and then there's a five-year warranty on the ropes. But, and, so, but the main components, basically the bones of it, do you get a 25-year warranty with?
Okay. What about the pickleball court? Any reassurances with that?
They'll give you a one-year warranty. I mean, obviously for any default, because it's asphalt and it, it does move, you know, but they'll give you, they do give you some warranty, yes. Under workmanship and craftsmanship, I guess.
Yeah, okay, okay. And then, so, Mr. Becker, you're a no vote on this. What would you be, yes or no?
If it were a 50/50 match with the, with the grant money, I think I could justify it.
You mean a 100% match or 50? 50?
No, that, that, you know, if.
Dollar for dollar?
If they were giving, dollar for dollar. If they were giving us, you know, 300.
I'm not a math guy, but isn't that a 100% match?
Yeah, dollar for.
Sorry, I'm not sure. Okay, I'm just making sure. Okay, okay, I'm sorry. So if we matched dollar for dollar the grant, that's.
Dollar for dollar, okay.
So, you're not thrilled with the grant?
Fifty percent of the total cost.
Funding received.
How's that?
You're not thrilled with the grant funding received in the first place?
Okay, so, you're saying you'd only be a yes, so the grant for the playground, to break it down, the grant for the playground is a hundred and twenty-five thousand, and you would only be okay spending, if the grant, which the only way we get this approved is if we spend two twenty-five, but you're saying you'd only be okay with it if it was one twenty-five, and then also for the pickleball court, one hundred and twenty-two thousand was our grant, and that's almost a dollar-for-dollar pledge, that's a hundred and twenty-five thousand we got to throw in. Am I right on that, Ms. Ayers?
No, the total cost.
No, no, what about the cost, what about the grant? Just simply the grant?
Yeah, we're required to put in a hundred and twenty-five, to get a hundred and twenty-two.
I see, okay, so...
Hundred and twenty-two.
So, is that, is there anything else? I mean, or is that, that would be the only way you would concede?
I, if our total cost were, what's our, so, the total of our grants is in the neighborhood of, what, two, two fifty?
Yes.
Correct, correct.
So, if our total cost was...
Five hundred.
Five hundred, I'd be more inclined to want to vote yes, but we're talking to a cost of almost seven hundred.
But you're not subtracting out the grant funding?
I'm not willing to go that far.
And you're not subtracting out the grant funding, though, when you're saying almost seven hundred, because that's...
Well, the total cost, he's saying, is, for both of them, is right around, is six eighty and some change.
That's receiving the grant funds in, so the net cost?
I thought six eighty was out of pocket.
No, that is the net.
Okay.
Six seventy-eight.
Is it six seventy-eight out of pocket?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, but so, the total cost is the six seventy-eight plus the...
Plus the two grants.
Plus the two grants.
Yeah.
Another two, which gets us up to what?
About nine hundred thousand.
Nine hundred thousand. Yeah, probably a million dollars.
Okay, so, let's have some dialogue on this.
Whoever here?
I'm just being very honest and candid, I, my, and I'm unbiased, I don't care, but my kids don't like going to our parks, and I've got three of them. We go to Julip's, or we go to Potavia, or we go to Miami Township, and there's another one in Anderson that's, I forget the name of it, off of Beachmont, I forget the name of it, it's a great park.
Butch Jaguars.
Yes, yeah, BJ, yeah, and, but we don't have a parks levy, so what do you, how do you solve that problem? And we have the ARPA funds, which is not a direct, I know, I know it's, at the end of the day, it's tax money, but it didn't come from our general fund, it's not like our local taxpayers paid it, if that makes sense, we got a hand-me-down gift from the federal government, what do you want to do to compete with Julip's Park in Anderson, or with Miami Township, or, I mean, what do you want to do?
I don't know that we need to compete with them, I don't know that I want to compete with them.
Well, I flat out am on the complete opposite side of the spectrum on that.
Okay.
When it comes to that, I do want to compete, I want, we've got fifty thousand residents, I don't know how many of those fifty thousand residents are children and ages, I'll say fifteen and younger, I do want to compete, and so, I mean, as someone that has got three kiddos, and my kids, they don't care about anything else, they just want to go have fun, they don't like going to our parks, so, you know, what do we do as far as that? I mean...
And John, did you say, or would you say, when your daughter was young, did you guys go to Julip's Park as well? Did you visit the Union Township parks?
Oh, yeah, I mean, we hit a variety of parks, Union Township as well as Julip's.
And you hang out there, and it brings people in from other communities, and they spend money, and they have economic value and involvement.
It brings another thing.
And when the, when, you know, when the parent groups, I mean, they start talking, look at this new exciting park, that's, I mean, my wife does that, she takes the kids and goes all over to see what park of what day, and it's, you know, I mean, it is an attraction, but I think on the other side of this conversation, it's something that you didn't, I like the way you phrase the question, Mr. Dills, as far as, you know, what do we pursue there, but like I've said, if we're going to do something, let's do it right, and that's why I'm interested in doing the parks right, but if it's just mediocre and it's underutilized, then, John, I think we have to have a real talk, and that's developing that park.
So...
And I'm not in that direction, I am for investing in the park, but to just sit there in the middle and not compete, it's wasted space, it's underutilized.
And I want to use this ARPA money, because, you know, we've talked, I'm not, I'm no developmental genius, that's why I strive myself with other folks that are, I don't know what to do with the Mount Carmel area, I want to throw some of this ARPA money over there and maybe entice some businesses to come in and rehab all that area, but I think, you know, the survey that we got back, I think the folks want our parks to look much better, and I think, you know, the residents can touch it, see it, play with it, and they can actually utilize it, and the playground is basically, from what my director's telling me, is it's good for the next twenty-five years, we don't have to worry about Klepper Playground for twenty-five years, what is this similar park going to cost in twenty-five years? And, I'll say this, where do we come up with this, we did not come up with this decision, our Parks and Recreation Committee did, which is citizen-led, volunteers that volunteered to be on this board, and they put everything together that Ms. Ayers and Mr. Taylor brought to them, and they gave them all these different concepts, and they're the ones that put this together, because they have kids and grandkids in our community, and they're the ones that built this, what we're voting on. So, it's not literally, our voices aren't even, didn't make this up, it was the community that made this up, I know it's a lot of money, but, yeah, I mean, I, if you're going to do something, do it right, especially the next twenty-five years, and I'll tell you, I thought, I played tennis back in the day, and I'm like, I'm not playing pickleball, I tried it, and pickleball's freaking awesome.
It's fun.
It is fun.
It's multi-generational.
I've played it twice, and I'm like, this is pretty cool, so, and Veterans Park is packed, absolutely packed all the time, and it's actually becoming like a bad problem, because you have to wait and wait and wait, and the courts are never open, so, the fact that we put these over at Klepper, I think the citizens are going to love it, I think they are, just based off how packed Veterans is, you know, so, oh, good.
One other nice strategic thing to think about that, too, is pursuing the grant funding for the sidewalks around Summerside, because if that comes through, then you have sidewalks that connect from the school all the way up through Klepper Park, like, again, I mean, everyone, I believe everyone attended the town halls with the schools, and they see the anxiety and mental health issues that are going up and up and up with students, and their activity going down, so I think it's strategic benefit to the schools, that's why I've heard talking with school board members and talking with residents in the area, so, I think that's another way in which we're supportive in the overall community, but that almost leaves me with a different question, and that's on the grant funding, we have to be competitive to support for grant funding, we can't do the, if we put forward a grant package that's a hundred percent, we're not going to be awarded grant funds, and that's just the very nature of other jurisdictions competing with us, so, I guess I have a question as far as what the board's future thought will be on grants, as far as if they're not dollar-for-dollar, so say Summerside sidewalk project comes in, and we're paying more than what would be dollar-for-dollar, is that something that, and it's not on the topic right now, but is that, is that something that you're leaning towards, you're not supportive of?
What was it again?
Basically, the scope of competitiveness for grant funding.
So, sidewalks?
If it's not, yeah, if it's not dollar-for-dollar, or is it, or are different projects different in your perspective about that?
It's a matter of assessing it on a case-by-case basis.
Yeah, okay.
I don't want to be making blanket statements on, you know, has this dollar amount or this grant amount for this project, it just depends. And if we're looking at this, and, you know, so I got the advantage of sitting next to the fiscal officer here with these numbers.
Yeah.
Good position to be in, so, just so we all understand what we're talking about, the total cost of the pickleball court and the, and playground equipment together is nine hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. Of that nine hundred and twenty-five, a hundred and twenty-five thousand is grant money from HUD, and another hundred and twenty-two is grant money from the Ohio Capital Budget Fund, such as your state dollars, which leaves then six hundred and seventy-eight thousand four hundred of the ARPA money we'd be using, which we could be using for roads, public, you know, a lot of different things, you know, the fungibility, and I just think the money is better spent on these other things, I just can't justify nine hundred and something thousand dollars for the, for the pickleball court and the playground equipment, it's just too, it's a bridge too far for me.
Well, I appreciate your perspective, and I do want to say how proud I am of this board when you mentioned roads, we've quadrupled the amount of miles that we've paved in just, I think, the two years that you guys have been here, and it went from just over a mile a year to, this year, we're just under five miles, is that right, Mr. Taylor? And by doing volume, and by doing the volume collaborative buy with the county, we're able to pave more roads for less money, coming in about equal to where you're at, that nine hundred thousand or so, I think is what we spent, but, yes, it's five miles of road, it is, but anyway, we've been pushing things along in many directions, the capital improvements for safety service vehicles, you know, where we've need to move things for, additional paving, where, because one hundred and thirty-three miles of road paving, one mile a year, that's not very good math for repayment plan for the township, so, I appreciate your perspective on that, I just, for me, I feel like you're, we're at a point right now where this one can drive economic development, it allows us to compete with other communities, it protects property values that are around there for our residents, and is a good area to be addressed that we've not addressed, and I guess, first and last, the citizens have spoke about it, and they're interested, and have strong, showed strong support.
Well, I guess the last thing I want to say is, you know, if I'm wrong, I want to hear from the public on this, you know, yeah, Becker, you know, spend the million bucks, we want pickleball courts and playground, I need to hear that from the public, but until I do, I'm not going there.
That's fair.
It's not spending, it's a lot of money, it's not spending one million dollars.
Nine twenty-five?
That's like saying, I go to the store and buy a ten-dollar t-shirt, but I got a two-dollar coupon, I didn't spend ten dollars, I spent eight dollars, okay, so in this case, it's six hundred and seventy-eight thousand, it's not one million.
Out of the ARPA funds? The total cost with the grants is nine twenty-five.
So, if I, I'm not going to argue semantics, but if I go to the store and buy a ten-dollar t-shirt, but I got a two-dollar coupon, I did not spend ten dollars, I spent eight dollars, and that's what I'm, that's the grant money that I'm talking about, so, we're spending six hundred and seventy-eight thousand, not one million, of the ARPA funds, and just so everyone knows this all very clear, you got this big bucket of general fund, and that's what, that's what pays for our police, our fire, our roads, our service, things like that, this is not coming from that bucket, so, but, hey, Ms. Taylor, how, ballpark, to twenty years old, how old is Klepper's Playground, ballpark?
I want to say it was, I think it's about two thousand nine, two thousand ten-ish.
And that playground equipment, and we're going to move it to Mount Carmel Park, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that is correct.
Okay, so, I mean, I think the next, you know, twenty years of boards of trustees will really thank us, okay, any more discussion? All right, Ms. Campbell, I'm sorry, gentlemen, I will entertain a motion, make sure I get this correct, and Ms. Ayers, I'm going to read the whole thing, so there's no room for misperception, I entertain a motion for Resolution two zero two-three dash two-three, American Rescue Act Funds Resolution, to adopt expenditure from the American Rescue Act Plan Funds to provide the Union Township through the coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds program for the purchase...
That's incorrect, it should be for the purchase of recreation amenities for Klepper Park, the funds to be incurred for the period beginning March third, two thousand twenty-one, and ending December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four, in the amount of six hundred and seventy-eight thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars and twenty-five cents.
What Ms. Ayers said?
So moved.
Second.
All right, Ms. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker?
No.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right, gentlemen, hey, you know what's great, is, we can have dialogue, we disagree, vote no, vote yes, but...
And so agreeable.
It's okay.
That's exactly right.
All right, ten o'clock at night, Mr. Becker, comments from the board, sir?
I guess, you know, it's a great meeting, I love all this discussion, and just the public understanding, you know, other than a public meeting, we don't get to talk about this kind of stuff, so, it's like, this is the first time we, you know, three of us have been able to talk on any of this stuff, because otherwise we're not allowed to, so it's refreshing, that's why we have a lot of conversation up here, because it's the first time we've talked about it. You know, so earlier, there was accusations about the Sensei Nature Center supporting, I'll speak to myself here, supporting my campaign, you know, I've heard this accusation before, so I guess just for the record here, I want to speak categorically, and, you know, if I were under oath, under penalty of perjury, I in no way received any kind of support, financial, or boots on the ground, or otherwise, at least that I know of, from anybody who works for the Sensei Nature Center, or the Sensei Nature Center itself, answer is zero, none, nothing, so this allegation about somehow this is a political payback, and we're keeping it just under ten thousand dollars to avoid the more public disclosure, and of course, as we talked about, the ten thousand's an arbitrary number anyway, as opposed to a legal number, which is, what, fifty thousand or something? So, anyway, it's ridiculous, I just wanted to go on record clarifying that, there is no there, there, and I am willing to make that same statement under oath, under penalty of perjury, is that, Mr. Chairman?
So, yeah. Great, Mr. Logue?
Nothing planned there to share, but, Mr. Becker, I would believe that that organization is also five oh one C three, I believe, so they would be risking their status, which I don't think would be smart, I think that'd be illegal and unethical, and I just, I don't think it would make sense.
Well, their executives could be punching in out of their own pocket, but I didn't get donations from anybody.
Yeah.
Or I didn't recognize the name, if I did, not somebody I know.
No, I just, nothing, nothing really additional to share at the end of this evening, other than, I will, I will hold this up and highlight this to you, gentlemen, so, the pickleball courts was an avenue of, again, pursuing the state capital bill, I did frankly want something more grand, but I was happy that that was the first time the township in recent history has been pursuing a capital grant program, and I wanted us to put that forward, for those type of amenities and activities, so, anyway, keep that in mind, think about that, now's the time to be working with the staff and working on ideas to pursue something that would be a good project for the township that, what they always look at when they award those capital grant fund dollars is viability of the project, how much you're contributing, what the impact's going to be to the community, what the economic return is going to be, they look for return on investment, it's not just simple to get funds, it has to be competitive, so, anyway, to share that with the board, and thank you, appreciate the dialogue tonight, and, yeah, great to be able to agree and disagree, and to not be disagreeable, so, yeah, absolutely, thank you, we're not disagreeable people.
Thank you all for staying.
Yeah.
Long meeting, whenever we've got a zoning case that takes, you know, there's a lot of emotion and behind it, people's property and things like that, you know, these meetings tend to go a little longer, so I appreciate you being here and sticking it out with us very much, I don't, I don't even talk about nonsense, so, if I wear the wrong t-shirt, I get the cues of stuff, if I go to the gym five days, whatever, Nature Center, I never got a donation from Nature Center, so, whatever, you've got to have thick skin to be in office, that's for sure, I've had to build it up, I do think, I do think our residents are going to thank us, John, I do, for Klepper Park, man, I think they're going to really thank us.
So, if we do a ribbon cutting and stuff, or you only do a tender, you're going to boycott us?
No, I'll be there.
He'll be there. Are you going to go on record and say, uh-huh?
No, no, we won't make him do that.
I won't, I won't, I won't, I'm poking too much fun now, I'll stop.
It's okay.
All right, let's look here, quite a few upcoming events, you can see them up there, I'm sorry, you have some news?
Mr. Chairman, I have one thing, I think I misspoke earlier, and I want to clear the record right now.
Please.
Mr. Hartman was talking about sales tax, and then he was talking about revenue, and he went to the Glen Estee property, I think I confused the two, so we will get pilot payments from the Glen Estee property, which I thought was where he was going with that, but he mentioned sales tax, sales tax goes to the county, we don't get sales tax at the township, I just want to be clear about that.
Correct.
I don't want somebody to quote be saying that we're getting sales taxes, we don't, just want to be clear, I think that's the way it came out, but I just want to set the record straight tonight, that if that's what I said, I was in error, and I'm fixing it right now.
You're a good man, Mr. Campbell.
Very good, that is all of us.
Ms. Taylor, it just came to me, Ms. Taylor, ballpark, so now that we approved the parks and the pickleball court, when can we break ground in ballpark, not going to hold you to anything, but ballpark, when can we expect to be finished?
So, the, the pickleball courts is a hundred days.
One hundred days?
One hundred days.
Great, so we'll get that.
Yeah, we should have it by, probably by the end of summer.
Great.
The, well, when we move forward on the playground set, it'll probably be around September, October, for the install.
For the, to break ground?
It takes a while, like everything else we have, it's supplied, it should be up and running in October.
Oh, it's only a month?
The install's only a month.
Yeah.
Great, 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 okay, perfect, thank you for that, okay, so tomorrow, there's a Park and Recreation Committee that will meet June fourteenth, right over in that room right there, at six P M., movie night, free movie night, awesome, never done that in the history of Union Township, we're doing it now, and that's at Veterans Park this time, and that is, oh, and there's a canine demonstration, outstanding, that's right, I forgot about that.
It is Union Township Superhero Pet Nights, so we're having the canine demonstration first, and then showing the DC League of Superhero Pets.
Which dog is doing that, is that...
Officer Perkins is doing it, I don't know whether he's bringing that there, you know?
Chaos, all right, all right, great, great, so, and then we're showing the movie DC League of Superhero Pets, makes sense for the canine demonstration, I love it, that starts at seven P M., correct?
The demonstration will start at seven, and then...
How's a movie that's still daylight, like nine?
The movie will start, and they're estimating around eight-thirty.
Ish, okay, all right, all right, we'll do our best, and then...
But it is sunset, so...
I'll see it on, we got Cone Ice coming, right?
Yes.
Awesome, Cone Ice, free for everyone, and so get your sugar fix on, Mr. Becker, free movie night at Klepper Park, July eighth, and eight-thirty P M., Willy Wonka and the Chocolate Factory, the free concert at Second Wind Band on July fifteenth, they're an awesome band, I'll be there, and non-emergency services will be closed for the township on June nineteenth for Juneteenth holiday, and July fourth for Independence Day, and then the Board of Trustees will have a special meeting to consider pending zoning cases on June twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three, at six P M., that's two weeks from today, Board of Trustees' next business meeting will be July eleventh, so a month from today, or, well, July eleventh at six P M., and the next Board of Trustees' working session will be July twenty-fifth at six P M., and then Union Township C I C, Community Improvement Corporation, will meet immediately following executive session, so while all you folks get to go home and eat and go to dinner, we got to go to executive session. So, gentlemen, I will entertain a motion for executive session to enter executive session pursuant to Ohio Revised Code, section one two, one point two-two G, as in golf, as follows, preparing for, conducting, or reviewing negotiations or bargaining sessions with public employees concerning their compensation or other terms and conditions of their employment.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
We're into executive session at ten oh four P M.
All right, thank you, sir.
Gentlemen, I entertain a motion to exit executive session with no action taken.
So moved. Second.
Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
We're out of executive session at 11:16 PM.
The panel is going to flip us over to the CICs. We just need a minute. Justin, let us know when you're ready.
Motion to adjourn this meeting?
Yeah, I was just going to say that.
Yep. Sorry. Good call. All right, gentlemen, are we live right now, Justin?
Yes.
All right. Gentlemen, I entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
So moved. Second.
All right. No discussion. Mr. Campbell, roll call.
Mr. Becker?
Yes.
Mr. Logue?
Yes.
Mr. Dills?
Yes.
We're adjourned at 11:17 PM.